Good afternoon. Welcome to our Committee of the Whole meeting for this Tuesday, September the ninth. My name is John French and as the councillor assigned to the acting mayor duties for the month of September, I will be chairing this afternoon's meeting. Hatz gualam, kus kalkunmuk, da squamish oemoe. Welcome to the traditional territory of the Squamish Nation. Please be advised that this council meeting is being livestreamed, recorded, and it'll be available to the public to view on the District of Squamish website after we've wrapped up the meeting. If you have concerns, please notify the corporate officer who is present at the meeting today. That's the deputy corporate officer, Chetan Carr. Council on looking for adoption of the agenda that is front of us. That is moved by councillor Hamilton and seconded by Mayor Hurford. Are there any opposed? Seeing none, we'll move on. And just before I hand it over to staff, it's my understanding that councillor Stoner, ah, I was going to say will be joining us virtually. I see that she has popped up and is with us at this point. So item number three on our agenda is staff reports and the topic at hand is transit fare review. I'll turn it over to staff for introductions.
Thanks. Good morning, Mayor and council. I'm Dora Gunn, a transportation planner with the District of Squamish. Today with us, we have Midhat Malik from BC Transit, a business development advisor, and Rob Brigma, Senior Manager of Government Relations. They'll be providing the presentation and then we'll all be available for questions.
Thank you, Dora. I think I'll just start with some introductory comments and Midhat will will do the bulk of the presentation and as Dora mentioned, be here for for a little color commentary and questions at the end. So transit fare review process, just to remind council, in the BC Transit partnership that we have, local government's responsible for 53% of the cost of transit. BC Transit through the Ministry of Transportation and Transit covers the other 47%. But local governments retain 100% of the fare revenue that is generated within their transit system to help offset your 53% of the cost. So 100% of fare revenues return back to local government. And local government has the final decision on fares as a result of that of that funding agreement through the BC Transit Act. So we tend to do fare reviews. We tried to do fare reviews every three to five years in all of our systems. But we hit this roadblock with this thing called COVID where ridership kind of dropped off the map. The provincial and federal governments supported transit systems across BC with restart funding to help keep those transit services on the ground and moving. But that money, that funding came with two stipulations. Number one, don't reduce service, don't reduce transit service. And number two, don't increase transit fares. And I think that was actually well thought out because if you think about it, the natural propensity when ridership declines is to look to cut costs. So you're going to either decrease your amount of service or increase revenue. So you're going to increase the cost. And that ultimately starts this kind of spiral of ridership down as you reduce transit service or you increase costs. You see kind of this spiral ridership, which really would have a long-term negative impact on transit services. Those stipulations came off as of April 2025. So that was the agreement. You get the funding. You can't decrease service. You can't increase fares until April of 2025. That is now that those restrictions are off. So we've been and Midhat's been quite busy working on fare reviews across the province to try to get us caught back up to where to where we've been. So really, at the end of the day, this fair review is to analyze revenue of fare products and really look to determine a strategy to find kind of that what I call balance or the optimal mix of fare products, options and pricing that maintain affordability, still support service and transit expansions moving forward, and find that right mix between a user pay and taxpayer paid paid service. So with that, I will turn it over to Midhat and she will walk us through the rest of the presentation.
Thanks, Rob. So for this fair review, we wanted to especially focus on improving transit system sustainability through fair structure adjustments and launching new revenue programs, especially if we wanted to consider subsidizing transit for high school students 18 and under. We're also, we're looking at this in a holistic picture as we are modernizing our transit system. Like we have new technologies in place, like YMO was launched in January 2024. And later this year, we're going to be implementing the debit and credit TAP system to make it even easier for passengers to ride transit. And you can see year over year, we've gotten like a big jump of revenue from the fare box and the 30-day passes. And we could potentially attribute that to the increased ease through YMO and like being able to buy things like on mobile and vendor networks. We've also noticed, so we have maintained our tickets option as a physical product that are available only at vendor locations and not via YMO. And we have seen like a decrease in revenue, but it is something that is still offered to the state, which is great. And I just wanted to like point something out here that when we look at our fares, single ride fares are $2. They're significantly lower than a lot of other transit systems. But we have a 30-day pass set at $39 and our concession discounted student senior pass at $20. Taking a closer look at the past sales, we see that 25% of the passes that are sold are from adults, the adult passes, but they make a majority of the revenue. You'll see it's like at the top, it's made 78,000 versus most of the quantity of sales are youth 30-day passes. And so when we're looking at youth and student, when we're looking at offering free fares, we would notice that a significant amount of our revenue would be lost. So this is kind of, we see our costs over the past six years and our projected costs for the next three, along with our revenues. And this is just showing that costs continue to rise across the province and revenues, if not adjusted, will continue to like reduce the cost recovery formula, meaning that it goes back to more taxpayer pay versus user pay. And when we're looking at sustainability of the system, we just want to balance the equation.
Yeah, I did have a question on this sort of chart because it does show our cost recovery a little bit lower than a comparable system. But when I dug into that, it's our our actual costs are quite a bit lower than other systems. And then our revenue is a little bit lower. So so while on the surface, it sounds like, oh, cost recovery is not as good. Actually, we're keeping, by my understanding, our operating costs really quite low compared to other places. Is there a, what's allowing us to do that? Or am I misunderstanding the table? And I'm looking at on page nine of the transit report, page 20 of our agenda, just comparing a comparable system, it's 1550 in cost per trip. And for us, we're doing it for $9.07 is our cost. So, you know, it's it's a significantly better cost management, it seems. And so how are we achieving that?
So the revenues are attributed to also the fair structure and the cost. So costs are continuing to increase, but though Squamish is managing that better, it's just like per passenger. So you just divide by ridership and then there could just be higher ridership in the system compared to.
Yeah, I think, thank you for your question, councillor Peddigil. The the key thing here really is that Squamish, although to your point, your 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 costs per passenger may be lower than some other systems, cost recovery kind of is the is kind of that that balancing benchmark that we look at. So how much of the revenue that you're producing goes against your cost base? What you're seeing here at kind of currently around 13 to 12%, you are still under the comparable system average in the province. So even though your costs may be lower because of your fair structure, you're not recouping as much revenue as well. So that's just kind of the 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 balance there. And what this chart really shows is that, you know, this council has been very supportive of transit expansion and continued development of the of the transit system. That comes with inherent increases in costs over the years, as well as the inflationary effects that are going to increase those costs. If we kept revenues at the same rate, you would just see a slight flattening or decrease in your cost recovery. So all we're kind of mentioning here is that you're a little bit behind the average. If you don't look at adjusting some of the fares, you will continue to decline in terms of your cost recovery. And I would just kind of make the comment that we want to see again, that good mix and that balance of revenue to help support some of the great work that this council is trying to put forward when they look at transit expansions in the region.
Okay, thank you. And just for clarity then, so it's not that we're, we don't think that we're doing something special in terms of how we maintain our buses or how we drive them. The fact that our cost per passengers is seems a fair bit lower is because our ridership is probably a fair bit higher than other places.
That's a great assumption, or I shouldn't say assumption, that's a great point to make.
Yeah. Okay, so as we take a closer look at other transit systems, we'll note that the, in all categories, single ride fare, day pass, 30-day pass, concession 30-day pass are significantly lower than others, even when you look at a $20 concession pass compared to 50, 45, 71 in North Bay. And the average across Canada, this is compiled by Hakuta, is 350 in 2023. So last fare change was implemented in September 2017, where the adult and single ride fare was increased from $1.75 to $2. And the three single ride fare options were combined to make a universal single ride fare. And that also implemented into day pass onboard, where people were able to buy a day pass like very conveniently on the bus. Now there is automatic fare capping. So if you are using YMO, you're not paying more than the day pass rate, which is two times a single ride fare for one day, which is very affordable. But you'll note that in the last fair review, there was no change to 30-day passes. And I dug in even deeper and there has been no change to 30-day passes since 1997, where it was actually $45 and it decreased to 39. And the student senior rate was $36 and they decreased it to $20 at the time. So there's more than enough justification now to reconsider that. Okay, so looking at our fair strategy guidelines, this is kind of what we base a lot of our recommendations on across the province. We want to make fair structures predictable for passengers to understand and to be able to grasp. And there is method to this madness across the board. But essentially, when we have our single red fare as our base fare, we look to double that for the day pass rate. That's aligned in the system. We look at our tickets, 10 rides option. We give a bulk purchase discount where if you buy 10 of them, you only pay nine times. That's aligned. The adult 30-day pass, we recommend any time, anything between a 10 to 30 time multiplier. Right now it is 19.5, so it's very close. We'd want to move it to 20. And then our concession 30-day pass, where we'd want to provide a 15% discount off the adult 30-day pass. Right now it's 49%. So that's bigger than we'd like. And the semester pass, we offer a 20% discount off the 30-day pass times four because it's at a four-month pass, but right now there's a 0% discount. But that is also because the 30-day pass is a significant discount. But we'd just be looking to increase the discount for the semester pass as we decrease the discount for the third day concession. So one way to increase transit system revenues is by increasing the amount of revenue sources that we could see. And one great program that we've seen successful in other systems is the ProPass program. It's an annual program available to employees through a payroll deduction system, where if there's any organization that has five people interested in signing up for a 12-year commitment, they would get a 15% discount for from the adult 30-day pass rate. And then what you see then is just like a commitment of transit revenues. And it's more stable and it's predictable. And then it can be increased across the board. You have five employees sign up. You have 100 employees sign up. It's for a 12-month term, increases revenue significantly immediately. And it also helps employers reduce parking demands and costs, demonstrating action on climate and improving recruitment and retention. And of course, it can further incentivize the transit use by offering additional discounts from their end. Another fair program is the EcoPass, which is a transit fund that is created through a bulk purchase discount where organizations can invest tens of thousands of dollars to support a variety of use cases. This is great because it's a vehicle for organizations to support transit access and investment. And every dollar invested goes directly to support transit ridership. Briefly looking at custom transit for a moment, we're seeing that tickets are actually becoming more popular over the years in custom, which is unlike conventional. But one thing that we wanted to note is that we don't have parity for the single ride fare from conventional and custom. Right now it's at a 25% 25 cent variance and we'd just like to see it to be the same for equity considerations because as we know, custom transit service costs significantly more to operate. And it also continues to face inflationary pressures in the coming years. And although the cost recovery is extremely low for the custom system, we think it's fair to maintain equity across both conventional and custom for passengers and then also make it memorable and easy to remember when you're looking at the fair structure. Okay, so let's look into the options. So I have three options presented in front of you and all of them are looking to align with inflation. If fares were stayed in line with inflation from 2017, we'd be looking at a 250 single ride fare. So just hoping to bring that up in all three of our options with the fair structure guidelines. We'd double that for the day pass rate, 10 tickets are nine times offering one free. And then the 30-day pass is marked at 20 times the single ride fare. The concession 30-day pass, we would look to bring it closer to our fair guidelines, not directly 15% right away, but closer from the 49% discount going to 30% discount in all three options. And really the difference is option one is offering free fares for youth 18 and under. You would see an additional discount then for post-secondary students to have the four-month pass at a 10% discount. Option two is aligning with inflation where it's like exactly the same as option one, except that there is no free fares for youth 18 and under. And then option three would be just making it a gradual increase over the course of two years. The fares haven't increased in eight years, so like maybe easing it out could help a bit. And then we would see that the 30-day concession pass would be offering a 30% discount in the first year. And then in the second year, as we get closer towards our fair guidelines, we'd offer a 20% discount. And then conversely, for the longer-term semester passes, we'd offer a 10% discount for four months in the first year and then a 15% discount in the second year. Another thing that we'd recommend is that whatever we recommend with option with our conventional system, we just like align that. So we recommend option two in our conventional fair structure. And we would also recommend option two for custom. And the last thing is also to introduce the two new fare programs, which offers the, which is the ProPass, which offers a 15% discount off the 30-day adult rate facilitated through payroll deductions. And then the EcoPass, which is a bulk purchase discount structure that can act as a vehicle to attract investments. And that has like a discount structure on the slide and then also table four in the report. And then in terms of the next steps, after today's decision, we would be looking to work with our marketing teams in-house, develop a marketing campaign and then launch the fare change effective date in early January. So with that, I will invite any questions if you have.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Gunn, did you want to jump in there? All right. We'll start with councillor Peddigil.
Okay, thank you. We've got got a few questions. One, on page 28 of our agenda, page 17 of the BC Transit Report, table six, I have it. In all of the options, all of them see a reduction in ridership even after two years compared to now, with the exception of the free fares for youth. Am I interpreting that right? And and I guess if I am, how are we justifying that? It seems we're putting revenue or cost ahead of ridership. And I think, you know, my sense is we don't want to ignore cost, but I think ridership has been a primary objective.
Yeah, through through the chair. Thank you for your question, councillor Peddigil. So when we do, and I'll, and Midhat may have some more detailed information to provide. But when we do these fair reviews and we look at adjusting pricing, we apply a very, I'll use the term simplistic price elasticity model, which would typically generate that as prices increase, that you're going to see a corresponding reduction in rides. So I just want to make a real clear distinction there. It's not riders, it's rides. So what it's saying is you'll probably, you you'll most likely maintain the riders that you have. But they may, you may see some of them take less rides. So I just want to make that that clear. The other thing that's not incorporated into that price elasticity model is transit investments. So as you improve the service, which this council has been quite supportive of doing, and you make the system more reliable, more convenient, you add frequency, you're going to see a corresponding increase in riders. So it's it's a bit of a, how do I say it, a one-channel view on if we increase prices, what that effect of those prices will have potentially on rides. But it's offset by additional service, expansion of service, making the system more usable to users. We would see probably a corresponding increase in ridership that I think would would overweight that decrease in rides. And Midhat, I don't know if you have any other comments?
That's great.
Okay, thank you. And then one other question around this EcoPass thing. And I see the top tier is $200,000, which is close to half of our revenue right now. So, you know, that doesn't seem feasible in Squamish or likely unless, and this is sort of my question, is this a sponsorship model where it's, you know, you might give your employees priority, but you sort of put your name on some of the buses and you sponsor that the system? Is that what this is? Or is there a program like that or that's?
Yeah, so this is a newer program for us. We've seen it implemented in Victoria as the first batch. And what they did was used it for development purposes. So property developers invest in this transit fund in exchange for a parking variance. And then in the District of Sandage, they actually made that a bylaw. But if you're along the transit-oriented route, then you can like in exchange for like two parking spots per unit, you could do one parking spot and then like pay for that. And then it's depleted by all the residents of that building over the course of time. So say they invested, I think last year in Victoria, we see $90,000 invested through this EcoPass program. And every year it increases depending on like how many new developments we have, we are seeing online. And we have that money and over the course of time, people are going to start using it. And until like the fund is depleted. But then if, say, the strata is like, you know, like people love like being in a building on a transit corridor and they love having access to this pool of money, they could certainly like as a strata be like, we want to invest through our strata fees in this fund for our residents that they like continue to be able to use things as they have. And that's just one example. So if for an employer example, say it's a big employer that really wants to fund transit. We've seen that in Island Health, for example, they want to offer it for ProPass. But say an organization is like, I'm willing to pay. But say an organization is like, I'm willing to pay fifty thousand dollars to like, as part of my mandate to like reduce transportation emissions and stuff. But we want to like see it be used like a hundred percent for transportation. So then that fund is just available until it's used. And it's not like every single employee gets it regardless of they have a car or not. It's if the ones that are using it will be using the fund and the ones that aren't, it, nothing happens, the fund is just available for them. And then in our contracts, when we're developing this, we put in a clause that the fund can be used or for like X amount of years before the transit system just realizes those revenues as revenue. So that's also something that can be tweaked per system and per contract for organization that's investing. So there's lots of opportunities with it and seeing an uptake and it's a great way to fund transit.
Counselor Hamilton.
Just, just quick follow-up. And then, yeah, obviously we would work very closely with staff, but B C Transit administers that program. So we, we manage to administer those, those programs to support the, the district in, in any initiative like that that they push forward.
Great, thank you. Counselor Hamilton.
Thanks very much. The, it was great to hear that debit and tap are coming in. And you said later this year, and this fare increase is being proposed as for January twenty twenty-six. One of my small concerns is that we frustrate people by trying, by having them try to find two quarters in their pocket without having a chance, right? It's that, do I have exact change to hop on the bus? Will we have the debit credit ability to pay before the fare change goes into effect?
Thank you for your question, Counselor. Through the chair, we currently are testing the debit and tap in, in Victoria. We have the ability to turn it on and off in any system right now. So we're doing some very strategic, random testing with kind of our employee base and, and our team. We are looking to launch that, that debit and tap in, likely in Whistler and Pemberton before the end of this year, so probably November, December. That's where we'll really kind of work out the last, let's call it kinks in the system once we turn it on live. Then we'll start to roll out to other systems. So Swamish obviously being in close proximity would be probably an easy next, in the next set of, of systems. I just don't have, I can't confirm at this time that it would be in place for January first, but I can definitely talk to kind of our director in that department and get a better idea of what that calendar looks like that they've got proposed. And definitely make them mention that it would be, it would be advantageous to have those two aligned if we could have that in place for, for the January first increase.
Yes, I'm hesitant to support a fair increase to two dollars, nothing to do with an increase. It's that, it's that slight added frustration of the human showing up with a toony and needing to find two quarters that I think we can avoid it by careful timing. And so I'm hesitant to generate that annoyance when we have the ability not to. My second question is about operating, operating cost per rider. So if I look at option one and option two, there's an increase of, oh, per ride. Sorry, not per rider, per ride. There's an increase of approximately sixty-eight thousand rides. A difference of sixty-eight thousand rides between option one and option two. Meaning option one, you're projecting that we get sixty-eight thousand more rides with option one compared, with option, sorry, with the free fares for the students. Let me just get clear on which option is which. Right, option one is perfect. All right, so we're going to put that table up on the screen so everybody can see and reference that. So if we look at option one, free youth for thirteen to eighteen, it's projected to increase the number of rides by thirty thousand. And option two, decrease the number of rides by thirty-eight thousand. So the difference between those two options is sixty-eight thousand rides. That's big. Have you looked at the, and, and we spoke about projected cost increases. Have you looked at the cost per ride for those two options? It's one of the metrics that you gave, our current metrics at nine dollars.
Yeah, thank you for the question, Counselor. Through the chair, the, so when we talk about operating cost per ride, we are, we're, we're obviously looking at our operational costs and, and simply dividing that by our ridership projection. What you're seeing here when we offer the free rides is, is, you know, the, the two pieces and, and Counselor Peddengill had mentioned this before, you see a decrease in revenue clearly because you have fairly high youth ridership. So you're going to lose that revenue by providing the free transit. But you're likely going to have those riders take more rides, which is where you get to the thirty thousand versus that price elasticity model. It says if you increase, you're going to see a corresponding kind of decrease. So the, the operating cost per ride, your, your op costs are not going to change. And the one, the one point I want to kind of make that's not in this calculation is that if you do provide free rides and you get those additional thirty thousand rides, what's not calculated in here is your potential increase in operating costs related to adding service to help fulfill those rides. So I'll use the example of the student, a student route, where you have students taking that right now. If you offer now free transit, that ridership may double, right? You kind of look at the numbers, you see the increase, that ridership may double. Well, if those buses are already three quarters full, now we have a problem. We're, we're going to need to add more buses, we're going to add, add more service. So we're going to have to increase the cost of, correspondingly increase the cost of transit to make sure that those riders have a convenient, comfortable ride, that we're not displacing fare paying customers that may be riding on that same bus. So I think what's, what's not in this analysis, and just I want to make sure council's clear. And I think it is in the, a little bit more in detail in the fare, the free fare review report that's in front of you, is that there is a corresponding additional cost that we would expect the, the district would need to, to incur if we did implement the free transit. So yes, there's, there's that variance in rides because of course, if we offer something for free, we're going to see that, that jump in ridership. We're going to lose the revenue and you may also see an increase in your op cost per ride because you're need to add more service into the system. So I hope that helps a little bit.
Yep. And what really helped me was table six in the staff report, which gives us those numbers, right? So our total projected cost for option one is four point four million. Our total projected cost for, for option two is four point two five million. And that includes the additional fifteen hundred hours of service and additional bus that you were speaking about. And then if I just take the operational cost per ride, option one, which is free fares for youth, takes us from nine dollars per ride to ten dollars and thirty-seven, ten dollars and thirty-five cents per ride. Option two takes us from nine dollars per ride to eleven dollars and ninety cents per ride. So if we look at our cost per ride, it gets almost twenty percent higher if we pick option two. That's more of a statement than a, than a, than a question. And it's something that didn't, doesn't come out of the report because we don't, we're not presenting, the, the report doesn't present the cost per ride. Whereas myself, I think about how much our ride, how much our system costs per rider.
Thank you, Counselor Hamilton. Mayor Herford.
My questions are mainly around timing, both of wherever we land on this increase. We heard a little bit about it's unlikely to align. I'm just going to say as my takeaway from your comments on the, on the interact, tap in, tap out piece. But in relation to our service level increase that we have coming, like how close, just with what we have in front of us in the recommendation, how closely aligned are those two things? And if they're not, what sort of revenue impact would it be to try to more closely align those? So that we're, we're bringing those both on at, at the same time and sort of one is, I mean, I think there's justification for adjustments as we sit here today. However, you know, it could be good to, useful to bundle these things together.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, for, for the question through the chair. So yes, on the alignment, just for, just for clarity, again, as I mentioned in my kind of preamble, local government not only has hundred percent responsibility on the fair levels that you choose, but you also have a hundred percent responsibility on when to implement. So we, we put January as, as, as a, as a B C Transit recommendation. But to, to the council point, to, to your point, you know, alignment is, is clearly advantageous if we, if we can align these things. So going back to your question, we do have, we have a, we actually have an expansion coming up in January. That's in our conventional system to help build out the frequent transit network that was approved expansion. And then we also are looking to implement the oceanfront on-demand service for March of, I think it's March fifteenth is the date, right at the start of spring break is when we kind of have that, that, that planned. So if, if council still chose, again, our recommendation would still be with January, just because of the positive impact to revenue that, that it would incur. But obviously we can go back, better understand the schedule for debit and credit tap, look at the implementation dates. And again, I think when we were looking at January, we're thinking about the conventional expansion of service and provide some feedback to council or staff on, on what those dates would look like. And if there is a, a better sweet spot for us to, to implement the, the fare change.
Okay, yeah, thank you. I, I knew that increase was coming. I just hadn't have the, the, the date and that feels in the neighborhood as far as the service increase. However, this interact, that, that piece, I'm not, I'll have to sort of weigh all these things out. But going on to the, on this table, the sort of that increased cost for option one, that increase, are you projecting that, that increase in cost being our incremental increase as a, as a local government? And sort of assuming that there's a provincial support for that increase? Like to me, if we choose this option one and we need that additional bus to do that, we know there's procurement challenges with buses. Like what does this mean in a practical sense if we, if council was to, to pursue that option one? You know, who pays that hundred and fifty cost? And, and then what is that number exactly? And that bus procurement and, and split, like would this need to wait till a, another service level change in a twenty twenty-seven? Sounds futuristic, but is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, I'll let, I'll let Midhead speak a little bit to the cost, but I'll talk a little bit, a little higher level, just to the point that you make about the fact where I referenced potential increased investment in the transit service to maintain the, the comfort level, the prevent pass-ups, prevent, you know, not being able to provide services for all the people that want to take transit. Those increases still, those increases, those potential expansions of service to help support the increase in ridership, those would, those would again fall within our transit expansion evaluation process. So they're not, you're not guaranteed to get the matching funding on a year-to-year basis. So I would categorize that as a risk for the district, is that you could move forward with free transit. You could see the corresponding increase in ridership, which makes, that would reduce the comfort level on the current buses or, or start to create pass-ups. You would then, you know, we'd monitor that, you would then want to increase transit services. That would have to go through our expansion evaluation process. Council would commit to it, B C Transit would take it forward in terms of our asset province. And then we'd have to wait to see if we get the matching funding. So that I just, I would clarify and it's good that you brought that up, that that would be a risk to the district. And then I'll let Midhead speak a little bit more to.
Thanks. So when I came up with this calculation, I did assume the cost split with the province, that totally it would be three hundred, closer towards three hundred, assuming the province takes half of the portion with the funding split formula. However, council has made that decision in twenty seventeen to offer free fares for youth twelve and under before it was under four without province, like contribution. When the province mandated free fares for youth twelve and under in twenty twenty-one, they provided additional source of funding for every single transit system to support everyone getting like recapturing some of that. But it's council in Swamish moved forward without it. So that is something entirely at your discretion and the risk that the province doesn't step up right away. But the bigger risk also is the loss in fare revenue. We're talking a hundred and thirty thousand dollars of lost revenue if we don't have another funding like source in place. So it is a noble pursuit to increase transit ridership, especially for our younger generation that will be amazing transit riders.
Counselor Hamilton on this?
And I think this, this may be a question to, to Ms. Gunn, and I, I don't anticipate an answer to this question. It is somewhat rhetorical. Is there any way for us to evaluate the reduced cost on our road infrastructure due to those sixty-eight thousand trips that will be taken by transit instead of some other mode of transit like a car? My guess is that's a really difficult thing to estimate.
Through the chair, I don't think I could provide you with a number. Obviously though, getting people out of their cars and onto transit is the goal of our transportation master plan and council. So it would be supporting that at a higher level.
And so I'll just point out that when, and I'm now speaking to council, when we think about an additional one hundred and thirty thou, or a hundred and thirty thousand dollars of lost revenue from our transit fares, we have to consider the alternative, which is sixty-eight thousand trips not being taken and the savings we will get on those cars not going through the Cleveland ninety-nine intersection. Because quite frankly, most of those rides are going to be something to do with House Town Secondary, which are going to be putting traffic, those are putting traffic through our busiest intersections. By reducing those busy times from cars and having those youth in buses, we're going to be saving a lot in our transit infrastructure and the pressure on our transit infrastructure that we can't capture here because it's super hard, totally get.
Counselor Peddengill, is it on this? Tend gently related? Okay, go please.
I think, I'm wondering if, if our surveys and the fare analysis that we've done, and, and I don't recall, like what I hear from people over and over again is they want more frequent service. And that is their primary obstacle. I don't hear often that the cost is an obstacle. Do we have data to, to back that up or that speaks to what people are finding is the real, the primary obstacle to transit?
Counselor Peddengill, thank, thank you for your question through the chair. There is documented research from QDA, from different transit agencies across North America, that the, that the gate to increasing transit mode share is exactly as you described it. It is convenience, it's frequency, it's reliability. Price actually comes quite a bit lower than any of those, those pieces. I'll use the example of someone driving their vehicle to work. If the transit bus doesn't stop near their house, if the transit route does not provide service that's going to get that person to work on time and get them home to make dinner for their family or to pick up their kids or any of the other things that they need to do. If the transit service does not hit those goalposts, they will not shift from, from the, from their vehicle, personal vehicle to, to transit. Transit inherently is already an affordable option for, for people. So we already, we already know that at, at two dollars, even two dollars fifty cents, that a regular transit user would probably spend less taking transit than they would with fuel, insurance, let's call it a, a car payment. So price is actually lower ranking than frequency, reliability, convenience of the transit service. That's, that's pretty documented. So that again, in order to hit on those pieces to actually increase transit mode share, it takes investment in the transit service. And that's, you know, I'll, I'll be honest, that's my personal challenge with free transit versus, versus paid transit is that I'm a big proponent of continual growth and increases in the transit service itself. And I recognize that local governments are all challenged with fiscal constraints across the province. And revenue from transit is one of the ways to help fund some of those increases. So I look at that way. Only other point I just want to make, and it goes a little bit back to Mayor Hurford's point, is that outside of offering free transit for youth, I just want to make sure the council is really clear that we're still offering a concession monthly pass that students could use, that would provide a 30% discount to the current, the current fares. If you, if you, if you chose a bucket session monthly pass, and if you actually invested in the semester pass, it's, it's a 40% discount to what our current single ride fare is. So there are councils pondering options here that do provide discounted transit to youth in, in these options, in, in particularly in option two. So just something for council to, to consider. I know it's a, it's a, it's a big one to thought, think about.
Just before you go, Counselor Peddingill, Counselor Stoner is up next, and we are now into overtime on this item. So I want to move along as quickly as we can.
Just to follow up on that, and it's intuitive to me that as an adult with everything, you know, you might sort of do that calculation versus a car and so on and so forth. And, and price may not be the barrier. It's not as clear to me that as a kid in high school, I would have the same sort of logic. And, you know, thinking, putting myself in those shoes, free versus $2 versus $2.50, like that might be a very significant driver. And so do we have any data? Is there a different sort of scenario for youth where the calculation is actually different in terms of what the driver is?
Yeah, thank you for the question. Midhead may have some information there. I would say the same principles still apply to a student as they do to a worker, is that you still need the amount of service and the frequency of service to your schools or, or the recreation center. You know, affectionately the local 7-Eleven, wherever kids want to go, you still need to have the transit services and the service there to, to get them to where they want to go and where they need to go in order for them to open that gate to use transit. So, but I, I, I kind of agree, I, I hear your train of thought in terms of different user types and how they may use transit differently and different influencing factors. But I'll just make that comment and I'll see if midhead has an additional comment.
Yeah, and I just wanted to add that we're not proposing a dramatic increase. 30-day passes haven't increased since 1997, or they haven't changed since 1997. And that's when it was $36 for youth to purchase it. And right now, almost 30 years later, we're proposing that we have a dollar less at 35. So it's more than reasonable after 30 years to have a $35 all-day pass where they can go to works, to schools, to their friends' houses, to the recreation center.
Counselor, yeah, is that the end of your thought? Okay, thank you, Counselor Stoner.
Yeah, thank you, through the chair, a few questions. I just want to clarify something that BC Transit folks said. To ensure that we are actually receiving funding from the province now to support our free under 12. So while we were out ahead of them, now that they have a provincial program, we are still receiving support for that, correct?
Yes, that is correct, Counselor Stoner. Through the chair, as midhead mentioned, this council was already progressive on the free transit 12 and under. And when the province implemented the program, you ended up getting a stipend that you weren't previously receiving as a result.
Thank you. When I first heard you speak, I thought you meant that we just like lost out on the stipend because we were ahead of the game. I'm happy to hear that the province still decided to show up. My other question is, the revenue loss for the free transit for under 18, the calculation is currently showing 126,000, which is more than double our current 30-day concession revenue, which also includes the seniors passes. And so I'm just wondering if you can speak a little bit to the magnitude of that loss expected?
Certainly. So when we're doing our projections, we're looking at transit system as a whole. And we don't have all the pieces of data, but when you look at 30-day passes and the user groups that are purchasing it, you would also attribute how many students are buying the 10 rides, the tickets? How many are doing the single ride day pass? And then you would do a similar kind of assumption that, okay, if 30-day passes are like 61% youth student rate, then it could also be assumed that of the revenue from the fare box and from the tickets, that it would be similar ratio. And that's kind of where that comes from.
Okay, that's helpful. Thanks for the additional detail. My other question was, or two, two more questions. First is, we identify that with the increase in demand with free fares, we likely need an additional bus. And I'm curious if we could actually bring on an additional bus at this time if we deem that that was necessary?
Thank you for the question, Counselor Stoner. You've been paying attention. Yes, we do, we, as, as this council knows, we, with our, with our current expansion of service, as I mentioned in January and, and March of, of 2026, our facility will be reaching maximum capacity. So BC Transit, as this council knows, is working on a facility plan to try to alleviate that. But that could be to build a new facility, could be several years in the making. At the same time, we are looking for additional parking spaces. We have, we have enough quote maintenance capacity at our current facility, but it's the, the ability to park buses. So we're currently exploring additional parking. There's nothing that I can speak to at this point that we have progress there. So I would say that, yes, by March of this year, we're, we're approaching capacity at our current, at our current facility. So BC Transit obviously has that in mind. And our infrastructure and real estate teams are, are, are kind of scouring, scouring for an interim solution that'll get us between our current facility and the future facility built.
Okay, that's helpful context. Thank you. My last question, which is maybe a little bit of a comment was, while I appreciate the concession or the 30-day pass in costs haven't increased since 2017, the day pass, there has been a shift because when we implemented UMO, you used to be able to do, like you used to get a, a transfer. And so you could do two rides on $2. And now you can't get to and from a location on less than $4. And so I just want to consider, or I guess my question is, how was that considered in the fair increase over time? Cause that was a pretty substantial increase and we did, we did hear from our riders at that time. So I just want to ensure that that is, was considered as part of the equation here.
Yeah, and we've looked at this in a lot of different systems. And we've also seen like typical ridership or rider behavior is that people will go somewhere and they'll come back later. And most people are paying two times per day at least. And council approved the day pass onboard in 2017, which means that you get to buy a day pass like on the bus. But that means that we can't also do transfers as well. But with UMO, it makes it so much more seamless. People are now being able to like use their app technology, their physical UMO card. And then also when debit and credit comes out, same thing, the automatic day pass will be applied the second time you ride. And there is a small group of people that might be, have benefited from the transfer before 2017. But we've seen the numbers and a lot of people will, it's like neutral that they're going to have paid twice anyways. And they're not paying more than twice per day. And that is kind of like allowing additional flexibility in people's schedules that they don't have to rush back home immediately if the 90-minute transfer expires. They don't have to negotiate with the driver and create conflict. It's just like, they know they've got all day to ride and they could go in the morning, they could go in the afternoon, they could go in the evening, and it creates simplicity and like an ease of understanding that, you know, I'm only paying max $5 for the day. And they could pair all of their like errand trips on the one day a week if they're like in frequent transit riders instead of potentially paying multiple times a week to do very quick errands within a 90-minute window.
Okay, that's helpful. And then my last question was just on the BC Bus Pass program, which the description of it says is for low-income seniors and those on disability only. Is it accessible to those on low income more generally? Or is it really just those two categories?
Low-income seniors and those with disabilities that aren't seniors. So it is just those two, and it's funded by the Ministry of Social Development. It currently makes 8% of revenues for the transit system.
Low-income family that might have two kids is not eligible for a BC Bus Pass program?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Stoner. Is it on this? Okay, go.
Do we, would we municipally have a, an ability to identify and address that, that cohort? If we so choose, or is that something that just data privacy and all those sorts of things? It's not something we could address?
Through the chair, there would be administrative costs associated with trying to start up a program like that. That's not something that we have contemplated at this time. We are working with CS Sky Community Services and now the Welcome Center to try to address some of those people in need.
Okay, great. Yes, thank you for asking that, Counselor Peddingill. I have one question of my own. I'd, I'd like to get a sense of how pro and eco-pass programs are working in communities that actually have those in, in place. And most specifically, communities that have had them in place for some time. I'd like a sense for how well-received they are and how well they function in those places.
Yeah. Okay, so the eco-pass program is very new. I think it's second year potentially, maybe we're getting into. So Victoria is the first one that's really like launched it. And the first year was $30,000 of investment, the next year 90. And for next year, I'm not sure what the projections are. But we've gotten it approved in three additional systems this year. So we're going to be working with developers or different contracts to get it in place effective, the fair change effective date this fall, and then see how that goes. With ProPass, it's an older program. It's, but has only been adopted by maybe five transit systems. Victoria, Nanaimo, Kamloops, Kelowna, Prince George. And we're seeing, we're having a bigger push now as we increase transit sustainability plans across the different systems. And in some systems like Victoria, I think we saw maybe 200,000 from ProPass. And in some of the smaller ones, it was closer to 40. But again, it's not something that we've been prioritizing because before UMO, it was significantly more burdensome to administer because the municipality would have to get, go through and send out physical cards. There might be like photo ID and all that. But with UMO, we administer that and with benefit codes, and it's very seamless and easy. And it's easy to like set up, it's easy to stop as employees turn over and change. So we think that it'll be a great way to increase revenue.
Great, thank you. Council recognizing we're 15 minutes over the time we allotted for this. Counselor Hamilton has a motion on standby. What, what I'd like to explore is moving to the second recommendation to direct staff to work with BC Transit to implement the eco-pass and pro-pass programs. Counselor Peddingill?
I did have a clarifying question to staff on that one.
Okay, go please.
So the eco-pass, I believe, sounds like it would tie into possibly some of our CAC, ACC policy and so on. So is it that sort of sending it into that processes, that policy work is being done? If it's parking in lieu kind of considerations, it sounds like that's what that's about. So is that, is that what this is directing to put it into that process?
Through the chair, yes, for when it's related to developers, we would, the planning department would then be working on how to implement this.
Okay, so, so with that, Counselor Peddingill, would you like to move number two in the staff recommendations?
Sure.
Okay, I'll second that. Would you like to speak to it?
Yeah, it does sound like there's a lot of opportunity here. I do, and the reason I asked about the CAC, ACC thing is there's lots of trade-offs. Are we putting money into daycare or affordable housing? And so this is another competitor for some of that. And so I'm assuming there will be, need to be another council touchpoint of where's this in our priorities of the olive things and ranks? Pools that people want that we're directing our funds to. So that was the reason for my question, but it does sound like there's opportunity here and I'd like to support this. Thank you.
Great, okay, I'll speak to it as well. These programs I find easy to support. And right off the top of my head, I can think of many large employers that would likely jump right on to these, that the pro-pass opportunity, grocery stores, fast food restaurants, hardware stores in the business parks, CDSG Gondola, the hotels, all likely candidates for this pro-pass program. And eco-pass, it sounds excellent as well as we potentially grow our rideshare programs here with, with developers, downtown developers in particular, that are building condominium spaces in partnership with the car share programs that we already have in place, the bike shares. Okay, I'll leave it at that. Anybody else with comments, Counselor Hamilton?
Yeah, thanks very much. I'll support the motion on the floor. I'm, the pro-pass sounds like a great idea. No-brainer in my mind, the eco-pass, I'm a little more hesitant on because it's not clear to me that we're actually going to be getting long-term benefits to the transit system. When we make a parking variance, we make a long-term change to the transit that's available to those people. Now, parking variance is almost always reducing the amount of parking, very rarely increasing. So we reduce the amount of parking and that's going to stand, that, that reduction in parking is going to last for the 50 years that that building is there. Whereas the, this, this eco-pass money is going to be used up within a few years. And then, so we still get left with a bit of the, a bit of hangover there, I think. And I'm a little bit concerned about that, but willing to, very happy to explore and see how it can fit in. Thanks.
Mayor Hurford, comments?
Thank you. Speaking in support of the motion, transit's obviously a very important, yet expensive endeavor. And, and any new tools to help us fund and, and the current system and, and as well as expansion, I think are worth exploring. Now, what we do with them, I think is, is really important to some of the points I've heard throughout the discussion and comments on this. And that's the discussion yet to come. But we should absolutely be exploring the use of all the tools available to us to move our goals forward. So happy to support. Thank you.
Great. Counselor Stoner, I don't see a hand, so I'm going to call the question. Are there any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries, unanimous. Counselor Hamilton?
Thanks very much. I'd like to put an alternative recommendation to the staff recommendation for item number one, to direct staff to work with BC Transit to implement conventional and custom fare changes based on option one, the free fare for youth in the staff report dated September 9th, when tap payment becomes available. So there's two aspects to that that are different from the staff recommendation. Change option two to option one and make sure that the tap payment, the, the fare change happens after the tap is enabled.
Okay. I am looking for a seconder on that. So Counselor Peddingill is going to second that motion. Counselor Hamilton, would you like to speak further to it?
Yeah, thanks very much. In my mind, this is really clear-cut. The increase, the 68, the predicted 68,000 trips that we're going to save to, to increase our ridership by 68,000, our 68,000 trips that people are not taking, likely by road, but by car, maybe some by bike. But those, that, that infrastructure cost, we're not considering that here if we only consider the $130,000 in lost revenue. It's going to cost us a lot more than $130,000 to maintain 70,000 trips, 68,000 trips on our roads every year. So in my mind, this is really a, one of those larger decisions about how do we spend our money moving forward? Do we spend it on increasing ridership? Absolutely, because the cost of increasing automobiles on the road is, is much, much higher.
Counselor Peddingill?
Yeah, I'm, to be honest, a little bit on the fence on this one. I wanted to hear my colleagues' thoughts, which is why I- Yeah, I'm, to be honest, a little bit on the fence on this one. I wanted to hear my colleagues' thoughts, which is why I seconded it. Part of the dilemma for me is, again, I, and there's some intuition here, is that fares are a bigger barrier for youth. And so while I, I understand some of the, the sensitivity and so on, and that for many riders, that's maybe not the obstacle. I, I suspect for youth it is, and, and so I think manage, and we also know about setting those lifetime practices and so on, and getting us, saving the, the cost on our transportation system as well. Like, it, it's, it's less visible, maybe the, the savings, but I think they are there. I do wonder a bit from what we've heard about the timing, is this something that should maybe also be tied on provincial commitment to the, the vehicles we need, and, and so does it need a couple of extra conditions? Those are some of the things that I am debating in my own mind, and so would love to hear what the rest of you think. Thank you.
Mayor Hereford?
Thank you. In general, I, I quite like the idea of having free fares for youth. I do think that our table here, which isn't up anymore, but is, that's, which is fine. You know, we were faced really with, presented with three options. To me, perhaps an option four is a more reasonable path forward, which would be to align with inflation now and work towards rolling out this free fares for youth in, with alignment of that additional bus and the planning to support it. Otherwise, we're going to find ourselves with a smashing success of a, of a program that actually makes our transit system underperform, and are, all of our investments are for naught, when we're actually getting a less desirable product to the, to the community because of these changes without fully understanding them. So further to that, we start our, our budget process coming up here next week and contemplating additional taxpayer dollars going into anything at this point, I think really needs to be, give us, give us pause, given the, the projected taxing taxation increases we have coming our way. So at this point, I'm not in favor. I will not be supporting this motion. Option two feels, feels like the path forward for, for me and, and hopefully for us as we look to hit that increased frequency. And, and we can contemplate this and do it in a controlled way in some sort of future expansion consideration. But I think as much as this is something that I would actually like to see in the end, doing this in combination with this fare review just isn't the right time or process to do it, so I won't be supporting.
Counselor Stoner?
Yeah, thank you through the chair. I also will be supporting the motion on the floor, while I appreciate my council colleagues' intent. And there are some strong rationales behind it in terms of the gap and difference of the number of rides that we might lose and or generate depending on the two options presented, the impact on our road systems. I think we have made substantive investments in our transit system in the last three years, nearly doubling the cost. We know that frequency of transit is most important in terms of getting new riders on our buses as well as ease of transit, and the biggest demand that we've had or requests from our community has been around regional transit. And so if I had a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to invest, it would be on either putting more buses on the road or trying to get a bus from here to Vancouver and here to Whistler. And I, I agree with Mayor Hereford that over time to get us to that reduced or free fare for those eighteen and under, I appreciate all the work that B C Transit has put into this fare review. It's something that we have asked for for many years, and while I appreciate the context of why it was put on hold with the transit restart funding, it's great to see the numbers and to really be able to digest the information that was presented. I was hopeful that we would be able to get there, but I think for the price tag that has been presented, I'm not quite on board. But I also am not fully supportive of option two. So if this does not pass, I would urge my council colleagues, and I have a motion to consider around still reducing the youth in concession fares even further than what's presented in option two. Thanks.
Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. I'll also not be supporting this motion. Three considerations. I, I would like to see better analysis of the infrastructure costs. Counselor Hamilton referred to, that is the potential reduction of burdens on, for example, Cleveland Highway ninety nine intersection. I'm also convinced by Mayor Hereford's and Mr. Ringma's reference to the risks in this approach. And finally, I think it's a broader topic back to need for analysis. I recall five, six years ago when our staff were engaged in the Haste Program, which was focused on school pickups and drop offs and that phenomenon, and it's not an easy one to address. It's a long, long term campaign, multifaceted likely. And I, so I believe that Counselor Hamilton's objectives are sound, but we need a, a better analysis, better context, better picture of, of, of the strategy needed. Thank you.
Very good. Unless there are any further comments, I am going to call the question. Are there any opposed? Mayor Hereford, Counselor Peddingill, Counselor Anderson, Counselor Stoner, and Counselor French are opposed. The motion fails. I clearly heard that Counselor Stoner has another motion standing by. So Counselor Stoner, I'd like to turn it over to you.
Thank you through the chair, and I did just email this to all of council, but it will have just landed in your inboxes, also for whoever is taking minutes. And that would be that we direct staff to work with B C Transit to implement the conventional and custom fare changes based on option two in the staff report dated September ninth with the following amendments. That the fare increases are introduced in alignment with the launch of the debit credit payment systems, that the thirty day concession pass is maintained at a forty percent discount, so that would be a thirty dollars, and that the semester pass is discounted at ten percent of four times thirty day concession fare, so a hundred and eight dollars. If I second it, I'll speak to it.
Mayor Hereford is seconding your motion. Go ahead, Counselor Stoner.
So for me, I'm putting this motion forward as I think it is the happy balance of the two. We aren't quite getting there at free fares for those under eighteen, but we are maintaining a highly discounted rate for those that we are trying to make most accessible transit for. I think between that and the previous motion that we passed around the ProPass and the EcoPass, this presents a variety of options for, for our transit users, as well as the B C Bus Pass system, in the, which will capture low income seniors and those with disabilities to ride the bus at discounted fares. Those are the highest priority for me in terms of ensuring that there's still accessible fares, while ensuring that there is a, some degree of increase that is not quite in line with inflation. I appreciate B C's Transit's fare guide and what it is that we are trying to achieve, but I think we have always, in our system, tried to maintain really progressive fare standards that maybe go above and beyond B C Transit's fare guide in order to make our bus system as, as accessible as possible and, and balance that that is appropriate for our community. And so that is why I'm putting this motion forward. I hope my council colleagues will support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Stoner. CEO Linda Glende has thought for us?
Thank you, counsel, and forgive the interruption while a motion has been placed on the floor. Before council votes on this motion, however, it would be important for staff to provide some clarification, and we would request a timeout so that we can consider what this motion has put forward.
Go ahead, Counselor Peddingill.
Just in, in, and just some clarification from the mover, because we've been focused on the youth piece. These, these discounts as written applies not just to youth, I think. I just want to confirm if the intent is that these adjustments to the motion are specific to youth related passes, or they are for these passes generally?
So it's the concession pass generally, which I understand is the only other thirty day pass that we have, so it is not exclusive to youth. It also allows seniors for a discounted rate.
Ms. Glende, is five minutes long enough? Okay, we'll recess for five minutes. That will bring us back at one twenty, please. Thank you very much for allowing us that recess. I, I allowed two extra minutes, being very generous. CEO Glende, is there an update out of your timeout?
Yes, through the chair, thank you. Actually, Ms. Latimer, the General Manager of Community Services, will provide that to council.
Thank you through the chair. Staff, we're just discussing the motion on the floor. And we'd appreciate the opportunity to be able to bring this back to council at a later date once the financial analysis can be completed on this option and some of the other implications that might be associated with it.
Okay, so from a procedure point of view, anybody have thoughts on how we handle this at this point? Okay, let's, while you're huddling, Counselor Stoner, go ahead.
May I add an additional line to my motion that staff bring it back for council consideration if it has significant financial implications?
Okay.
Significant financial or service implications.
Okay, Mayor Hereford as the seconder, did you catch that? One more, one more time, please.
That be brought back to council if staff find that there are significant financial or service implications of the above motion.
Okay, so I'm just going to check with staff. Does, does that address what you're looking for by adding that to the motion?
Through the chair, did I hear an if in there? I, I, it would be excellent if it would be that we will bring it back to council.
Counselor Stoner?
Sure, that you will bring it back to council.
Okay, so Mayor Hereford, that lands as a friendly amendment. Counselor Peddingill?
Just a clarifying question to staff. Am I correct in thinking there aren't the time pressures that there are with some of our commitments to three year service planning and so on, like this, we do have a bit more time?
Through the chair, yes, the timing is at our discretion.
Our covert officer wants to chime in, Ms. Carr?
There was a mover and a seconder to the regional motion, so we need, can be a friendly amendment. We need a mover and a seconder for the amendment.
I think we, I hope we captured the language of that as the amendment from Counselor Stoner. I'm happy to second it.
Okay, so, all right, so we'll treat this as an amendment, which has been seconded by Mayor Hereford. Okay. So that is an amendment from Counselor Stoner. Would you like to speak to the amendment, Counselor Stoner?
Yeah, thank you through the chair. The original The original motion said that we wouldn't introduce this until it could align with the launch of the debit credit system. So I think that is give us a little bit more breathing room. And if staff need some time to take that back and assess the financial and service implications, then happy to provide that direction and have this conversation again at a later date. Thank you.
Are there any further comments before I call the question? On the amendment. Are there any opposed? Seeing none, the amendment carries unanimously. Now, before I call the question on the main motion as amended, are there any further comments? Counselor Penningill?
Well, I'll just, I, I think this is a constructive change. Just in the back of my mind, I know youth council is ramping up and so it'll give us a, an actual touch point to speak to the most affected folks, I think. As we come into a decision on this, which I think is a good thing, so happy to support.
Are there any further comments? Have some of my own, I'd like to thank Counselor Hamilton for testing the original motion. I feel that I want us to work towards free transit service for those under eighteen. I just feel that this today is not the time. I also believe we have to ask and act in a fiscally responsible way. And I think that this motion achieves that while also allowing us to thoughtfully plan ahead for free service for eighteen and under. And I also believe that introducing the eco and pro pass programs allows us to build up revenues through those programs to potentially offset the lost revenue that we had experienced by eliminating the fee fares for students. Once these programs are well in place, they could potentially balance out that revenue scenario that we're grappling with. So with that, I will call the question, are there any opposed? And seeing none, that motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. And that will move us then to two I's on our agenda, which is office-based projects review. And because we are, well, more than thirty minutes behind schedule. I'm anticipating staff can move us fairly quickly to this next item. Okay. Yeah, there is no pressure to make up time, please go at the pace that you had planned to go at for this particular item. Okay, please introduce yourselves and take it away.
Good afternoon, committee of the whole, my name's Asia Philp, planner with the district. With me today have Matt Gunn, another planner, and Jesse Fletcher, manager of planning. And we're at the table today to present a review and a snapshot of the current office-based projects in the district and to seek your feedback and direction on several forthcoming development applications that are requesting replacement of the office components of their projects with other uses. This is, how did, where do I put this? I did it. All right, the purpose for today is to firstly present a review of the current and future office space supply in Squamish. And then have a holistic discussion with you guys on the conversion of the unbuilt office space in previously approved projects that are in our development pipeline. So staff have been approached by several developers who have requested that we consider allowing the office components of their projects to be replaced or swapped out for other uses. The developers have said these projects are not financially viable with the office components, and they will not proceed in the near term, given the current downturn in the office market. These office components of these projects were negotiated through the rezoning process to align with our district policies. And in particular with policies around the creation of new employment space to ensure local jobs grow in tandem with residential growth. So I'll start by doing a quick run-through of the three development projects that are requesting to swap out their office components. And then we'll move on to the overall snapshot of our office supply. So the project shown in the top image is Plaza at Junction Park. It's located at three seven eight seven zero Cleveland Avenue in downtown Squamish. It consists of three mixed-use buildings with a dedicated four-story employment space building located at the north end of the block, fronting Main Street. This building, as previously approved, has three floors of office space. The project in the bottom image is located at one thousand one Finch Drive in the Loggers East neighborhood. And it consists of two mixed-use buildings with a four-story employment space building located at the corner of Finch Drive and Loggers Lane. And this also has three floors of office space in it. The last of the three projects is located at eleven hundred Hunter Place in downtown Squamish. And it consists of five mixed-use buildings with a six-story employment space building fronting onto Pemberton Avenue. And this, as previously approved, has five floors of dedicated office space. So as shown in the table, we have these three active applications that are requesting to swap out the office components of their project. Combine these projects comprise seven thousand one hundred and eighty square meters of potential office space, which represents a thirty percent potential increase in the total supply of dedicated office space within the district. So now move into an overall snapshot of the office space supply picture. This graph summarizes the current and potential future office supply, as well as projected future demand. The first column in green shows the twenty twenty estimated office space supply, which is based on the twenty twenty employment space demand model work. Staff then calculated the amount of dedicated office space that has been built in the five years since twenty twenty. And this is shown in the green, in the second green column. So this is our current office supply to date. And then moving on to the two middle columns. The first of the two teal columns shows the future office space that is currently in the development pipeline, added on to the twenty twenty five, so our current day supply. So this is the scenario of a full build-out of everything that is currently in our development pipeline. And then the second teal column shows the amount of future office supply if the three current applications are removed from the pipeline. The last two pink columns show the projected future office space demand to twenty forty-one. And this work is based on the twenty twenty employment space demand model work. So we need to take this with a large grain of salt, as it was all based on pre-COVID office demand assumptions. And the office landscape is continuing to evolve coming out of the pandemic and with all the remote work changes. The first pink column shows the low demand estimate, and the second pink column shows the high demand estimate. Oh. Sorry, we're good, let's keep going. All right, I'll now dive a bit further into some of the other projects that are in our development pipeline. These are the projects that are contributing to the teal columns from the previous graph. So the two buildings shown here are part of the Mountain Village, Village Project, currently under construction, located on Centennial Way in the northern part of the Loggers East neighborhood. The top building has a small second-story office component, and the bottom building is a dedicated employment space building, the majority of which is office space. The top left building shown here is at the corner of Cleveland and Victoria. It has a small second-story office component, and it's currently at the development permit stage. Then moving clockwise, the top right building is on Second Avenue between Winnipeg and Victoria. This also has a second-story office component, and this project is at the building permit stage. And then the bottom building is the Works One project located at the oceanfront. It has three stories of office, and it's also in the development permit stage. And what's not shown here is the Village on Bailey Street project, which is at the rezoning stage, and has a significant office component currently proposed with it. So beyond our development pipeline, the following areas in Squamish present opportunities for longer-range development of office space in the district. And whether these opportunities materialize in the long term will depend heavily on future demand, redevelopment of existing sites and existing buildings, as well as future incentives and the requirements of various district policies and regulations. So to aid committee discussion and direction, staff are suggesting two main options. Option one is to retain the development projects as originally proposed, so keep the office component of these projects. The main potential implication of option one is that these projects don't move forward to construction for an unknown length of time, as they're currently not financially viable. And this would result in the other components of these projects also not getting built, which include housing units, other employment space components, as well as negotiated community amenity contributions associated with each project. Option two is to swap the office component for other uses. And option two can be refined to direct staff to explore more specific uses, such as employment space or residential uses. For clarity, staff have labeled these options two A and two B respectively. And if the committee wanted to get even more specific, these could be further refined down into various types of employment space, such as tourist accommodation, retail, or industrial, as well as specific types of residential, such as affordable rental or market rental. There are trade-offs associated with each of these options, and there's not a one-size-fits-all approach. Each of these current applications are different from each other. However, staff have made the following recommendation to get the conversation started and get the ball rolling. The main recommendation to focus on is the number two, that council directs staff to explore alternative employment space options to replace the office space requirements in previously approved but yet unbuilt developments. And this generally aligns the best with district employment space policies. So I'll conclude my presentation there, pass it back to the chair, questions and comments?
Thank you for moving quickly and being concise, that's great. Counsel, questions? Counselor Stoner, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you through the chair. I'm just wondering if staff can speak a little bit to the demand for office space as we see it. The report has a few links, and you mentioned that the landscape has kind of changed post-COVID, but we're also seeing actually a lot of employers require folks to come back to the office now. More so in the past few months than ever before. So do we have a temperature check on what's actually happening in Squamish? What's our vacancy rate for office space? Was it zero percent? Has that changed?
So through the chair, we don't actually have a specific vacancy rate, is that data isn't tracked for Squamish through any of the commercial realtors? But staff reached out to the main commercial realtors in town to try to get a temperature check from them. And the two realtors that we did have a chat with didn't, they didn't have a clear picture on exactly what the demand is out there. It seemed to be very specific to individual businesses and employers. And it seemed to be that it was, like, if the space is created, the space can be filled, was what one realtor told us. Do you want to add to that?
Sure, yeah, further to that, some of the comments we got from the, from the realtors reflected the importance of the desirability of the office space for getting filled. We have seen some office space sit empty that wasn't considered really high-quality office space. So they really focused on, you know, if it's in a location that's really desirable, which tends to be a high amenity place like downtown, and if it was built with, you know, sufficient height and access, that those, I think both realtors gave the sense that they felt stuff would fill over time. But they didn't have quantified information, they, and when we asked them, you know, do you think we should be hanging on to office space? They did say, well, we should hang on to some component of it. But they weren't, I wouldn't say that they gave an impression of go gangbusters, there's, there's limits to the demand. But it, you know, this is all fairly qualitative, given the information that we had available.
And then just a follow-up on that, did we do any outreach to the Chamber Economic Development Officer? Any of the businesses in town that we know are growing and looking for office space?
Through the chair, we didn't, we didn't reach out beyond kind of the local real estate industry. There was some mention of specific businesses in town who were actively searching as examples. Most of them seem to be in the medical and health practitioner field.
Thank you.
Counselor Hamilton?
Yeah, thanks very much. So this seems like an interesting way that this is coming to us. If a developer has a piece of property and they want to change the land use, that normally comes through a rezoning, right? I recognize that they've already gone through a rezoning, but they've, you know, made choices and they made concessions there. And now they're finding it maybe not economically viable for them to follow through on those choices. So is there anything preventing them from doing what our, what I believe our regular procedure would be, which was be to apply for a rezoning, even if it's a second rezoning?
Yeah, through the chair, so I can clarify that we've received two applications for rezoning to re-rezone the projects. And one sounds like it's forthcoming, kind of also wanting to get a temperature check from council. But we thought it prudent to bring these to you guys ahead of time to give, first of all, heads up and get some initial kind of high level, more like looking at things higher up than focusing on each individual application as kind of they trickle in.
Okay, thanks. So, so the staff recommendation, item two, direct staff to explore alternative employment space options to replace office-based requirements in previously approved unbuilt developments. That is referring to all previously approved and unbuilt properties, not just those three that have approached us, is that, do I understand that correctly?
Through the chair, I would interpret it as applying mostly to the three, the three that are before us for consideration, and not necessarily to all of them, but I think that you could clarify that in a more refined motion.
Okay, so, okay, great, that, yeah.
Go ahead, Mr. Gunn.
I think part of this is, there's an application that's going to come forward from these applicants. And staff is trying to get a sense on the direction they should take in working with that applicant to prepare their application. For example, if, if council has a very strong feeling that they, a feeling that that office space is paramount and, you know, the likelihood of flexibility on that is low, then that would be good to let them know early on if there was openness to other uses on those lands. It'd be good to let them know, it'd help make sure that the applicant, the application that comes forward is more in line with council's interests to facilitate that process.
Okay, great. And so just to be clear that I understand, this, you're just asking for a temperature check on where we're at? All of these three would still be coming for rezoning through our regular rezoning processes with updated CAC amendments? For example, if our CAC policy has changed from the original rezoning till now, we would apply the current CAC requirements?
Do you want to go? Okay, through the chair, I think staff's opinion is that we wouldn't kind of crack open the whole meal deal and that we would stay focused on something that is of similar, like if it was going from employment straight space to like for-profit residential, I think we would then probably be looking at additional CAC. But if it's more employ, another type of employment space, I don't think we would seek to open up the entire project.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor Stoner, do you have a follow-up on, on one of these? Go ahead.
Sorry, it's a different line of questioning, so I'll just get put on the list again.
Yeah, okay, so just stand by for a sec while I check in with those who haven't spoken yet. Counselor Penningill, go ahead.
Well, I just, I have lots of opinions on this topic, not too many questions.
This is question time, so let's hear your questions, please. Oh, oh, you have, okay, well then, Mayor Hereford, what are your questions?
Some opinions as well, but I'm going to start with questions, just, I appreciate the sort of, the opportunity that this discussion presents and them coming together in, in this way, I think is a useful way to, to consider this. But stepping outside of that, to that bigger picture of, you know, applications that we've yet to receive and the policy that led to But stepping outside of that, to that bigger picture of, you know, applications that we've yet to receive and the policy that led to us to be here discussing these, like how do we see addressing that issue? We do a temperature check here, council decides to hold the line or make a change of some sort. How do we inform that bigger policy so that we get buildable projects from the development community and that are supportable by, by council going forward? Like, is there any bigger policy considerations we, like, that would be subsequent to, to this?
I'll go first. So to me, it's kind of about trade offs, like a lot of our policies conflict with each other. And each site is so specific and each development is proposing something completely unique. And so it's like so hard for us to get a clear policy that perfectly melds something that's specific to a site in terms of the balance between residential, employment space. It's really challenging.
Okay.
And I have a follow up to that. I think the the, the big challenge along lines of the trade offs is that the viability of things like office employment space, it shifts over time. And we need to be responsive to that if we want projects to continue. And so I think we, we've created some policy frameworks that drive, you know, we want to get a lot of employment space. We're trying to maximize that. But our question now is, do we, are we wanting to be flexible on those to support viability? I think we'll continue to strive for as much employment space as we can. But if that desire doesn't line up with viability, what we want to know from council is, do we want to flex on that to get housing units? Or do we want to hold and, and make sure we get our vision at its optimal situation? Is that?
Okay, Counselor Peddingill, you've got a, a question for follow up?
Yeah, and, and so I guess trying to wrap my head around sort of the recommendations, this, this policy we have, because it, it feels a little bit like, you know, the sort of viability ups and flows for different markets, as you said. It feels like a lot of these project, projects were sort of, to some degree speculation driven in a high market. And now we're being asked to sort of accommodate for the speculation that hasn't worked out. So try and save some of this for my, my commentary. But one of the underlying pieces is, is, I think in our policy is, like you said, employment, but high paying employment, avoiding commuting and supporting these, these transitions. And I guess I'm trying to sort of wrap my head around the, the recommendation of, because it seems to be, is there a thought that we should be responding to sort of year over year market variations to keep, you know, the speculators whole, or, or do staff have thoughts about, or maybe this is just the question to us, about where we sort of hold true to our, no, we need employment and you've got to figure out a way. I guess that's what you're asking us, or I guess what I'm sort of struggling with is the recommendations seem to be either, unless I'm misunderstanding, no employment, like residential, or the other option is low paying employment. But there doesn't seem to be anything in the recommendation of whether it's industrial or office or any other form, any of those things. So, so I guess, I'll go with that, why not industrial or some other form of higher paying employment as opposed to what you've recommended here?
Yeah. So through the chair, I think part of the response is related to the actual product. So all of these are specific office buildings of upper floors that still have either childcare or commercial retail units below. Industrial doesn't work on upper floors. It needs to have a ground floor access. And so the types of uses that can go on the upper floors traditionally is quite limited. I guess there could be some creative alternative solution, but generally what we see is for upper stories, it's residential or office or tourist accommodation, something that can be on an upper story.
Go ahead.
So, because some of these I thought had office on first floor as well. You're, are we talking strictly the varying second and third floor? And, and first floor switching to industrial possibly, or what are we?
Through the chair, no, you're right. There's, I think, one or two projects that might have office on the ground floor. Centennial is the only one I can think of off the top of my head that has ground floor. The rest of them is all second floor and above.
Okay, Counselor Stoner, stand by. I have a question on my own. I'm wondering if staff has thoughts at this point on the viability of tourist accommodation squeezing into sixteen hundred meters of space on three floors? I can't wrap my head around how a hotel could be viable in that scenario. And maybe this question is premature, and this is the kind of alternative thing that staff wants to look into. But if you have thoughts on that now, I'd love to hear it.
Well, through the chair, we haven't investigated the viability, but we have been told that boutique hotel is a possibility in some of these locations that are not directly on the highway. And then it's the larger hotel chains that prefer sites that are specific to the highway and don't actually want to go anywhere else. That's the only information that we have, unless you want to add to it?
Yeah, maybe, I think the tourist accommodation recommendation, there's one of the projects that specifically we've heard there's interest, like almost a passion project from the owner, that about achieving that in the site. And accommodation does have quite a link to other economic activities in our community. And what we've heard is it's also very hard to, to land a hotel, a new hotel in a community. The, the land value has to be incredibly low for it to, to be a viable project. So it, a bit of an opportunistic recommendation on that front. Maybe there's a chance of getting something that's got a particular niche and could support other aspects of the community. I think maybe the other thing that, hearing the discussion, counsel, that I feel is that maybe we shouldn't be looking at our recommendation as all or nothing. That the tourist accommodation may be appropriate in one location, and we may want to look at other areas site by site. I think the bigger question here is, we want to know how committed council is to achieving employment, especially office. Or is there a desire to be more flexible to ensure projects can move along? I, I feel like maybe getting hung up on that one particular recommendation isn't the key thing here. It's more to understand your feeling about the, the value of office versus having projects that have residential continuing along. And just so you know, this is very challenging for staff. We, we have these applications coming together or that are coming forward, and we are very, you know, we, we find it very hard to think about, well, the office is very valuable. We want those jobs. But housing units are also important. There's some real trade offs here, and I think that's why we're here looking for, you know, some support from you in terms of what are your values and, and intentions?
Counselor Stoner?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Your line of questioning, Counselor French, just raised something for me, which is, we do have one other project that we have supported in the past, I believe, that has tourist accommodation on the second floor, which was the Dogwoods Building on Vancouver. Am I correct in remembering that?
Yes.
Certainly, yes.
It's just interesting to think about some of the other examples, because I think I remember that came fairly late in the rezoning, was to change that second floor office to short term accommodation. My other question was around the projects that we're looking at. Many of these rezonings were adopted three or more years ago. The development permit was done in twenty twenty one. Do we have any sense as to why? Like, what was the holdup? Like, they couldn't, like, there was an option to build. And so I think this is, I think what I'm hearing from some of my council colleagues is like, it's not our problem to make projects viable. And developers hold for different reasons. Do we have any sense, like, were the three or four year delays here as a result of getting servicing agreements? Is there anything that we actually own other than just changing market conditions? And what mechanisms, if we were to consider changing these things, what mechanisms do we have in place to ensure that builders actually build?
Do you want? Okay.
Mr. Valaniskas is going to join us, Counselor Stoner.
Thank you. Just wanted to add that it's very much demand driven office space. And so what we've heard from conversations with some of the developers that have gone through the rezoning process, have committed to build office space, they're willing to build it if they can find a tenant for it in order to finance the project without having a tenant in tow. It's very difficult to finance projects. And the assumption right now is that there are no tenants that have come forward for these buildings. And so they're, they've been waiting for a few years, and now they're looking to switch gears. So it's, even if we want office space and we're willing to hold out for it, it just might mean that it will never happen. Or developers will wait for, you know, a different political landscape, different realities when they, when they can change things. It's all, it's very much demand driven. We can't make people build something that they, they can't find tenants for.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any further questions? I, Counselor Anderson? No, okay. I'm, I'm just going to do a check in, counsel. I'm, I'm feeling like maybe a round of feedback and thoughts might be appropriate in this circumstance. Mayor Herford?
Sorry, I, I will take that opportunity, but I have a quick question in advance of that. Just in the table, sorry, in the report, table one, that goes to the summary of the CAC offer that are on, they're sort of on the table. Some have been, have been, some of the cash has been received, some hasn't. Obviously, we haven't received the market units and the other benefits that are committed there. But in the ones where we have received the cash, if the project doesn't advance, is that cash returned or is that a risk that's, like, where, where does that sit here as we're contemplating this?
Yeah, through the chair, so that's at the developer's risk. They don't get that cash back. It's in exchange for the rezoning essentially, or part of the rezoning.
Okay, that's, and then the, and then that, the timing of those cash contributions seem to be different when it, it, or were they both at DP? Or all three at DP and the one just hasn't been issued to DP yet? Is that what's happening?
No, the timing has, is different depending on the project, and that's something that's negotiated with the developer. Generally, at the staff level, we strive to get it as early as possible for these exact situations.
Okay, thank you. All right. So I think the, to me, this feels like when we, we relaxed some energy efficiency in the buildings for some rental projects, and we saw them advance, because that's what was needed to do that. And generally, I'm supportive of some relaxation that makes this viable, given that we have particularly the below market housing, I think it's a total fifty, fifty-three units here that are committed to, as well as fifty-seven units of market rental. So I, I'm interested in, in, in some relaxation that would allow these to happen. Now, whether that's a totally stepping back from the, from the office entirely, I, I have a hard time with, with that, so I don't think it's quite that binary. But exploring some options here that may be appropriate, and there, the, the options are, are, as we've heard, are likely site specific that make this, that make this work. But, so I, I would be interested to hear what those things could be and accept a lower, either a zero office, consideration of full switch over, or if it's appropriate on the, a reduction in the office and have some other use come in, come in behind. But I do think it's important that those are employment focused, rather than going to taking this, the proposed office space and converting it to residential unless it's below market rental. So below market rental or other employment pieces. I do think the direct, the, the tourist accommodation, I think, is particularly interesting as we know that that investments in that area are really hard to come by. And each, you know, overnight stay really drives further economic benefit to the, to the community. And so I'm, I'm quite interested in that as well, but I'm not ready to completely abandon the office space components of all of these projects in one sort of fell swoop.
Counselor Stoner, I see your hand. You'll be up after Counselor Peddingill, followed by Counselor Anderson.
Yeah, thanks. So I, you know, for me, I, I don't feel a lot of urgency in responding to what I see as a, a momentary market situation where, from my perspective, we've seen inflated land values. When you look at what's driving costs, everything, land values is, the speculation on that is, for me, what seems to be at the basis of all of this. And so for us as a community to work around that, that just supports that inflation of land values. And so I have some inclination to hold hard. I think for me, I, I don't hear from people, we want a lot more housing. We want more traffic and so on. There's a perception, and I want to understand, there's a misperception that we don't have quite the commuting population that people think, but there is some. And the more we build housing without matching jobs that, that, where people can live and work here, all the parking, all the traffic, all those things just get worse and worse and worse. And so I'm not fixated on office. It doesn't have to be office. But it has to be high paying employment, so that the people that are having jobs here or that are moving here can actually work here, so we don't have the parking and traffic challenges to the same degree. We also know, dollar for dollar, we get a lot more taxation to support our recreation, all the services that people say they want. We get that from businesses more than residential. And so if we allow us to be a bedroom community for Vancouver, it's not just the additional demand on our services, it's the reduction in, in revenue to support those services and that growth. So we have to hold hard, I think, on employment. And if that means you have to rethink the structure of the building more fundamentally, you can't just switch out the third floor. Maybe you need to really think the first three fours or the whole development. I'm okay with that. And, and so for me, you know, there is certain unique circumstances around hotel accommodation. We know those are short. And so in one or two of these, there may be an argument on a per project basis to consider that. But as a whole policy, no. In, in general, my principle would be, there needs to be good paying employment that matches any housing we're building. And if that's not there, I wouldn't approve the project in the first place. And so if you can't do with office, then propose something else with high paying employment, not retail. And so, so that's where I am. Thank you. Counselor Stoner?
Thank you, through the chair. I think this was a really interesting conversation. I want to thank staff for bringing it to us and having a bit of a higher level perspective before we get into individual applications that are undoubtedly coming forward to give us a bit of a bigger picture perspective on where our employment space is at. I think generally it's important to remember that growth and development of our community is really done in partnership. There's government. We require developers in order to build the things that we know we need to see through our development policies. And our community is a critical component of that as well, ensuring that we are actually delivering together on the built forms that our community expects at the end of the day. And with that, I think our policy and our employment space modeling that has been done to date has really identified the importance of maintaining high value employment spaces like office space, industrial space. And so I have pretty little empathy on it honestly at this point for folks that are coming forward to say that this isn't viable. That's not our job is to make projects viable. It's our job to work in partnership with development and community, to get the things that our community needs at the end of the day. And so while I appreciate that this might mean that some projects are not viable in this day and age, markets change and we don't have control over the markets. And so they could have built four years ago and they chose not to. And here we are four years later and they're asking for a shift. That being said, I think within the context of our existing policy, there are some elements that I would maybe entertain, and that is a consideration of tourism accommodation in some select sites, because we know that there's a significant need for different forms of tourism accommodation in our community. And a full on build of a hotel is less than viable at this point in time. And so that second floor tourism accommodation might be supportable, as well as other high forms of. as well as other high forms of high income employment. So whether it's other forms of industrial or a different form of, of office, whatever that might look like. But to me, those both come with asterisks. So if the developer is willing to exchange some of the current housing that is on site and transform that to rental housing, then I would maybe entertain a change in the employment space. But if it's not coming at a change in the form of the market housing that is on site, then I think that's a, it's a hard starting point for a conversation. Thanks.
Next to have Counselor Anderson, followed by Counselor Hamilton.
Thank you. My guess, my comments are really about the items two and three in the staff recommendation. And or maybe might quite be quite general. First of all, there's reference to the 2020 employment demand model work. That work did not address categories of employment and industrial land, which typically have a more episodic demand profile, that is medium industrial. It, you cannot model certain types of employment land demand because they're not related to population growth. They're related to export industries like tourism or other industrial processes. I have a list of twenty local companies. These aren't even the outside potential investors desperately looking for medium industrial land. These are high wage employers. They're companies well known to probably most of us in the room here. These are companies looking for medium industrial and large format light industrial, none of which can be addressed by the types of properties that are under discussion here. I believe that staff are, are, are right in the assumption that there are multiple opportunities for further development of office space in future. Some are, are listed, the oceanfront with some, some caveats. Oceanfront Peninsula North, there are indeed probably competing uses that can be anticipated here. And that's the long short areas currently Scotmish Forestry. The Caplin University Lands at the bottom of, of, I guess it's Third Avenue. The environmental issues there, which should have been anticipated back in 2008 when that transaction was undertaken. I will also note, however, that on the west side in the Garibaldi Estates area of Highway 99, there's reference to that, the condition of the buildings there on the west side is rather different as regards to physical conditions of the buildings. And we can probably anticipate a sooner rather than later interest in redeveloping on the west side of that highway. So these are opportunities. I think that in exploring alternative employment space options and opportunities for substituting out office use, we need to undertake some policy work. And I'd like to mention some of these policy work issues that are maybe overdue. One of them is a tourism master plan. I think a tourism master plan can help us plot out opportunities for the different types of maybe even interim accommodation use. I travel in Europe every year, a wide variety of circumstances for, for short term rental and, and tourist accommodation use that we could be exploring through that type of policy work item. Another policy work that we've already done is the childcare analysis, which should help us already in identifying opportunities. But also the arts and cultural heritage strategy is tactic six point four. And that is really cultural and institutional space needs. We have not done that work. And we have examples at the oceanfront already in a Bailey Street under discussion already, where there's some of those types of uses that are being talked about and considered or approved already in, in these mixed use developments. We also have the marine action strategy. I believe it's item four point one point one, which addresses undertaking analysis of needs and opportunities on our waterfront. This relates to oceanfront north and the options and scenarios that are there. We need to do this policy work alongside. And in summary, I'm, I'm in support of moving these projects along. The ones that are mentioned, the examples and the scenarios that are mentioned. And one of my reasons is, and it was also a part of my rationale for supporting the proposal that we had a couple of weeks ago before us at Victorian Cleveland. We need to address the built environment of the community. Squamish has a handicap of gas station lots, undeveloped lots in our downtown area. And there's actually probably an economic cost to this of having, having areas that are that. So, and I see that some developers are really going above and beyond the Main Street Plaza design, for example. I think we should be looking at moving forward with these developments. Thank you, Chair.
Counselor Hamilton.
Thanks very much. I'll try to keep my comments brief. This is a really interesting conversation that's really made me think about what is the role of local government and government in general in the market? Yeah, it's, right? We have a role in deciding and setting policy moving forward so that the market can do what the market does. And it's questions like this that we're starting to ask, how does the policy react to the market? And I think one of the things that's important is that our policies are stable. Our policies are driven by our long-term vision. And so in this case, I always welcome somebody applying for a rezoning. They're always welcome to do that. But we should be making those decisions within the policy frameworks that we have set. So in this case, I think we need to look at looking at our policy, looking at our long-term employment strategies. And if those need to change, then we reconsider the rezonings. Then, then we, then the folks might feel like that's worth their gamble to apply for a rezoning. But I think that one-off reactions or three-off reactions to a changing market, we're creating instability in our policy and allowing those that ask to get. Whereas we should be setting a policy and having everybody follow our policy objectives. So absolutely encourage the folks to apply. There is some risk to applying if staff sees a need for reviewing our land use policy with respect to employment, which I, with, with office space, which I can see, we can all see there's a reduction in demand for office space. If we need to react, we should do that in our policy, not in one-offs. So, thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Hamilton. My preference in solving this is to keep these spaces for employment opportunities as opposed to moving over to residential, recognizing the need for below market and market rental housing. It makes sense for me that the future built environment has employment space opportunities so that those who are already living here have employment opportunities in their own communities. And much of what I've heard from my colleagues aligns with where, where I'm thinking on this. So I think I'll just pause there and check with staff. Is there anything you have not heard in the comments that you are hoping to get in the way of feedback? Or does, is this feedback that you've heard in the last few minutes constructive and moves us forward?
Through the chair, I think we're all in agreement that this helps us move forward.
Okay, right. So I will look to my council colleagues for a motion that formalizes Mayor Herford.
Thank you. I'm going to move, so I'll move that we receive the Office Space Projects Review Report dated September ninth. And, and then direct staff to explore alternative employment space options to reduce or replace, that's the change, reduce or replace the office space requirements in previously approved and unbuilt developments, including but not limited to tourism accommodation.
And you're
I'll speak to it if it's seconded.
You're consciously not including item number three?
Yeah, I'm doing one and two.
Very good. Is there a second or for the mayor's motion? Seconded by Counselor Anderson. What do you like to speak further to at Mayor Herford?
Yeah, thank you. I think that, you know, when I look at the, we make decisions in, in this room. And, and I think it's important that we understand the impacts of, of those. When we, we have here, these projects that were in the report have a total of fifty-seven market rentals and fifty-three affordable housing units as well as a three hundred and four meter square meter daycare space associated with them if they're to, to proceed. And I think those are, are all very appealing. We've heard some challenges with the office use. In my comments, I spoke to the, that I, I, I wasn't interested in sort of a binary solution that had us just stepping away completely from that requirement, but sticking with employment space and seeing if a reduction, that's why I changed the language of this motion slightly, to reduce or replace and, and see what that, what that looks like. I heard other counselors speak to seeking some sort of middle ground and perhaps some other trade-offs to be associated with, with this, to make it supportable. And, and I think that's part of what the, what the explore piece is here. So I'm trying not to be, I'm trying to capture the, both my intent and the comments I heard around the room, but leave it open enough that we've given some direction to staff by way of motion rather than just exclusively in comments. And through those comments, we've signaled what we would like to see or what might make things supportable over the long run. That doesn't mean that what comes back after this exploration is ultimately supportable, but it gives direction to, to explore those options and see if they are palatable as we have those goals around high paying employment spaces or employment spaces that generate a high amount of, of economic benefit broadly to the community. And, and ultimately have not so much the, the development being, being realized for the sake of the developer, but for these contributions that we've diligently negotiated to actually come to, to fruition, including again, the market rental, the affordable housing that's associated with it. And perhaps most of all, the, the childcare space. So I think it's worth exploring some of those options and to see if we can hold on to, to those benefits for the community.
Counselor Anderson, as the secondor, go ahead.
Thank you. Mayor Herford has, has used the, discusses explore. I support this sympathy and direction. And also Mayor Herford to summarize your comments with, with the concept flexibility. Flexibility, not, not limited to tourist accommodation or other types of things to explore, institutional, cultural, daycare. And I think also there's opportunity for other types of community benefit arrangements. And even in the projects listed, there may be some opportunities to discuss further with the proponents. Finally, when we talk about jobs to housing ratio balance and being a smart growth community, not a commuter community and economic development, this is just a part of the picture. We need to look more broadly at other aspects of land use and not, and understand that, what the broader context is of economic development strategy and land use in the community. Thank you.
Counselor Peddingill.
Yeah, thanks. At the moment, I'm actually not inclined to support this. I think, to me, we have good policy. I don't see, I'm not inclined to adjust policy just to address momentary market conditions. There are specific projects which may have some different perspectives, which I think could still be altered within our existing policy. I think we have the guidance there. And so I would prefer to see some of these come forward in a normal rezoning process. We can apply our existing policy, which I think gives us the flexibility to address some of the ideas and, and stick with our principles. I, I haven't heard an argument that our, our existing policies are fundamentally flawed. And so as I'm hearing, this is a direction to explore really changing our policy outside of these specific applications. I think the, the consideration belongs with specific rezoning applications at this point, unless I hear something more to convince me that our policy more broadly needs adjustment. I'm just not quite there yet. And I think we'll have some guests later on this afternoon or quite have a strong perspective of where we should be focusing some of our efforts. To me, this doesn't rise to the top of where we should, we need to be doing policy work at the moment. Thank you.
Counselor Stoner.
Yeah, thank you through the chair. I also won't be supporting the motion on the floor. I don't think that this actually reflects what I heard around the table. It definitely doesn't reflect where I think we should be directing staff time and energy. If we do want to update our employment space model and our employment policies, then I'm happy to direct staff to do so. But I don't want to do that in response directly to market conditions and developer requests. The addition of just reduce into this motion where it previously just said replace also increases my spidey senses around the motion on the floor. I have no interest in reducing the office space specifically, potentially replacing it for other employment lands or employment options I would potentially entertain. So the motion as presented on the floor, I don't think is reflective of what I would be willing to entertain as other counselors had suggested. If there are developers out there that want to come forward for rezoning, we can discuss this on a one-off within the parameters that we have existing policy. And if we think our policy is out of date or needs updating, then we can do that work. But I don't want to direct staff to simply start exploring these alternatives for all previously approved unbuilt developments. There are a lot of them in the pipeline and I don't think that's where we should be directing staff time. Thanks.
Counselor Hamilton.
Thanks very much. My comments are very much in line with Counselor Stoner's. I'm not seeing, I, I'm struggling with this motion because I, it is not clear to me that it should be our role to look at previously approved zonings to see how we can accommodate the market viability of things that have been previously approved. I think we will get into chasing our tail and generating unrealistic expectations of making modifications to rezonings that, you know, I'll get this rezoning and then, then if it doesn't work, if it's not market viable, then they'll be able to change it a little bit in the future. I think we need to have a clear policy. If we need to review our employment space policy, specifically with respect to offices, we should do that. And in reaction to that change in policy, if developers feel like they want to come for a rezoning, they're more than welcome to in light of new policy. But we should stick with our policy. And I recognize that we as local government move slower than the market. That is a reality I don't think we can fix. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Hamilton. Just would like to turn to staff for a procedure question. Item one here is to receive the report. And I think I don't necessarily want us to have that fail. At this point, can we separate one and two and handle them separately?
Through the chair, you will need a motion to sever because we have a mover and a secondor at this point.
Okay, so I have a motion to sever from Mayor Herford and it's seconded by Counselor Hamilton. Are there any opposed to severing? Seeing none, that motion passes. So let's deal with number one at this point. Mayor Herford?
Yeah, just, I'm happy that we've landed several of these motions. And, but I have an additional comment on the second part, so I'd just like to.
Okay, let's take care of receiving the report first. So I'll call the question on receiving the Office Space Projects Review Report dated September ninth, 2025. Are there any opposed? Seeing none, that motion carries unanimously. Mayor Herford, go ahead.
Thank you. I think the, a couple of things, just through, through comments from, from others. The, I, I understand sort of the way to read this reduce. To me, this wasn't a reduce. I wasn't meaning in the, in the, and the wording might be clumsy. And I'm, I'm open to refining it, but it's not so much, it's not actually a reduction in the overall square footage. It's that that employment space doesn't need to be exclusively office space, is what I was thinking by that, by that wording. Now, I recognize as I read this motion through that other lens of seeing it as, as a, as a reduction. It could be read that way, but that's not the, the intent. And if, if, if that intent is better captured with other wording, I'm struggling to get that wording. I could use some, some support there, the, from, from council to get that across the line. I also think that when we reflect back and to projects that have been approved by previous councils and then eventually get built and people wonder, well, wow, what was, what was happening there? What was the delay? What was the, the timeframe? I think Redbridge comes to mind, where it sat in this hinterland for a long time. And we get something that ultimately doesn't, perhaps wouldn't be what we'd consider acceptable by the modern standards. So this is an opportunity for us to advance some pieces that match our policy as closely as possible. Otherwise, they, they sit and there's not, we don't have that element of control over when they actually are realized. And all of this is happening inside the broader scope of our housing targets discussion that I think is, will be ever present for us. And, and actually was a column that I, I don't want, there's a lot of information in the report and some of our other reports. It had spoken to the percentage of those targets that they had, these projects represented. And I think that's an important And I think that's an important consideration in all of this as well.
Counselor Penningill.
Yeah, just in response, I appreciate some of those comments. But again, to me, this feels like a bit of a knee jerk reaction to a specific request and tied to a few specific projects. If if this is giving us an indication that we feel that there's a more holistic review of some of our employment space policy or other policy, I think we should do, you know, have a clear resolution that directs that policy work. And I think elevates it above some of the other stuff on our pipeline. For me, this isn't the priority right now, and it's not clear to me that this is actually needed. And so I might still have trouble supporting without understanding that context of what other policy are we setting aside where we to prioritize this. But sort of, you know, I I think we should focus on the broader policy and where that fits in with our other policy work. And and in the interim, if that's not fast enough for these developers, they can come for rezoning and work through with our existing policy. I would also suggest, you know, if people are sitting for a decade on undeveloped property, might be a signal our property taxes are too low. You should be putting money into the community. And when you, you know, no one likes high taxes, but at least if you're living here and seeing the benefits of that, it's a lot more palatable. And it makes it harder for someone to hold on land and speculate until you can make a killing. And so I I think the solution here is, again, not for us as a community to give concessions to developers so they develop sooner. It's to make sure that we are setting, as some of my colleagues have said, the policy that gets us the the community that we want and need, and we hold to that.
Counsel, any further comments before I call the question? Seeing none, I will call the question. Are there any opposed? Counselor Stoner opposes, along with Counsel Penningill and Counsel Hamilton. The motion fails tie leading to failed motion. Counsel, is there an alternative motion? Counselor Penningill.
Just to clarify, if we really need one, I think I heard staff say they sort of had an understanding, I think, or maybe that split vote changed things. But do we need a motion or does staff sort of understand? Like, I think what I heard is that there's some comfort with us, with the three of us just having these come forward as rezonings. But is staff looking for a specific resolution with something more or?
Oh, thank you. If council were to simply provide a motion that directs staff to take this feedback, would that be sufficient? Counselor Hamilton.
Yeah, I'll put forward a motion to provide the feedback given in relation to zoning of the unbuilt office space development.
Is there a secondor to that motion? Counselor Penningill seconds. Are there any comments on this? Mayor Hurford.
I think this motion is, and our comments here today were, just as we saw a split vote in this on the last motion, I don't think as much as staff is saying that we've that they they have enough to to work from. I don't think this is nearly specific enough to resolve some of the the pieces that we we have here. And I think so I won't be, I won't be supporting it. I think council can do a better job of articulating their the direction to staff.
Counselor Stoner.
I think what I've heard around the table was some decent feedback to staff on the different perspectives around the table of the unbuilt office space. And the general consensus that I heard is that this could be addressed on one off applications if developers wanted to bring them forward. But we're not directing staff to do deep dive work on readjusting the policy for all the unbuilt development spaces in the pipeline. And so I think that this conversation is informative for all of us around the table, for staff who have been listening, as well as I'm sure that developers who have applications in have also been listening and have perhaps got some insight as to how they might want to amend those applications to make them as successful as possible. So I do hope that that is sufficient. And if not, then we can talk about it in one off applications from developers. Thanks.
Counselor Penningill.
Yeah, and I'll I'll take the the mayor's point. I think there have been times where we've fallen short in providing clarity in some of our resolutions. But in this case, I am comfortable with the processes and the policy that we have. And so because I don't want to direct any change to what we have in place now, I'm I'm not wanting, that's why I'm not wanting to put forward a motion. I don't want to see any change. I expect these will come through in our existing processes and existing policy, and we will deal with them in that context. And and so if I wanted some specific change, I would propose something. But in this case, I don't. So that's why I'm not proposing anything else right now.
All right, unless there are any further comments, I'm ready to call the question. Are there any opposed? Mayor Hurford and Counsel Anderson oppose, so that motion passes. Thank you very much, staff. And I'd like for us to take a 10 minute recess while we set up for the final item in our committee of the whole. So let's come back at 2:40. So that actually makes it a nine minute recess, 2:40, we're back in session. All right, let's reconvene and move things along. The final item in our committee of the whole meeting today relates to the 2026 permissive tax exemptions. And just a quick note, one council member is in conflict of interest on why not him. So we will be moving ahead with the knowledge that one item will be saved to later when that conflict gets declared. And I'll turn it over to staff at this point to do introductions.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. My name is Rianne Susa, and I'm the Director of Financial Operations at the district to assist with addressing me. My pronouns are she and her. I'm here today to present on permissive tax exemptions, which I'll also reference as PTEs. The goal of the presentation today is to receive council direction on which PTE applications to bring forward for bylaw first three readings at the October 7th regular business meeting. For council and the community's background, I'll first review the legislation. A council may by bylaw accept land under improvements from property taxes, which are referred to as permissive tax exemptions. A PTE will exempt all property taxes, municipal and other, and redistribute the taxes to other taxpayers. A PTE may be granted up to a 10 year period, and council must give public notice of the proposed permissive tax exemption bylaws prior to adoption. A PTE differs from general statutory exemptions granted under section 220 of the community charter in that the decision to grant a permissive tax exemption is at council's discretion. The district's PTE program has an annual intake, and the application deadline was July 31st, 2025 this year. It is staff's role to assess the applications against legislation and the district's PTE policy and bring eligible applications forward for council consideration. Seven applications are eligible for council to consider granting PTEs to. Prior to moving into reviewing the applications, I'd like to note that religious organizations receive a statutory exemption. The exemption is for the religious building and the footprint of the building. The property surrounding the religious building is eligible for a PTE. I'll now move on to reviewing the PTE applications. On the PTE application, the district requires that the applicant provide a summary of their organization's purpose. The overview that's detailed on each of the slides is what the organizations have provided. With that, the primary purpose of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter Day Saints is to help both members and nonmembers come to Christ through its teachings. The church encourages its members to improve their lives by promoting education. The Church encourages its members to improve their lives by promoting education, enhancing employment opportunities, and providing welfare assistance to those in need. In addition to worship services, the Church engages in charitable activities. A five-year PTE will align the PTE expiration cycle. With similar organizations, the estimated PTE for 2026 is $4,000. The Roman Catholic Archbishop of Vancouver, also known as St. Joseph's Church in Squamish, conducts services for residents and visitors. In the Squamish area, the services include faith-based programs and Roman Catholic religious services. In addition to providing religious services, it supports local charities. A five-year PTE will align the PTE expiration cycle with similar organizations. The estimated PTE for 2026 is $5,200. Squamish Baptist Church provides weekly worship services and food, clothing, and broad-based assistance to those in need. In addition, the Church operates a daycare that offers both before and after-school care as well as full-day care during the holidays and summer for school-aged children. A five-year PTE will align the PTE expiration cycle with similar organizations. The estimated PTE for 2026 is $3,500. Squamish Helping Hands Society operates two locations on Third Avenue, both of which are leased from the district. The application has been submitted for 37870 Third Avenue. The other location, known as Under One Roof, has already been granted a PTE for 2026. At 37870 Third Avenue, the society provides supervision of substance use to prevent harm and death as a result of poisoned drugs. In addition, it provides harm reduction supplies and education on safe substance use as well as overdose prevention training workshops. A one-year PTE will enable a review of the PTE eligibility next year as the lease agreement is month-to-month. The estimated PTE for 2026 is $22,279. The Squamish Sikh Society promotes and practices Sikh religion, performs weddings, holds events and death ceremonies, provides food, and organizes an annual parade and festival. The society has submitted two applications. One is for the property that the place of worship located on is located on. And again, this would be for the land surrounding the place of worship. And the second is for an adjacent vacant piece of land. The vacant land is used for overflow parking. A five-year PTE would align the PTE expiration cycle with similar organizations. However, if council proceeds with granting a PTE, it is recommended that only a one-year PTE is granted for the vacant land property. This will enable the district to monitor the use of the land. The combined estimated PTE for 2026 is $11,250. The Seanaide of Diocese of New Westminster provides a spiritual home for Anglicans and others in the community. The organization offers space for various groups. In addition, it hosts its own programming, such as walks and a free drop-in playground for children and their caregivers. A five-year PTE will align the PTE expiration cycle with similar organizations. The estimated PTE for 2026 is $3,200. And that's a review of the six of the seven applications. So I will move into a summary and then do the last, review the last application at the end that has a conflict. So if council moves forward and grants PTEs for each of the eligible applications for the time period recommended by staff, the municipal and other taxes that will be redistributed to other property taxpayers are $92,000 in 2026, $31,000 in 2027, $35,000 in 2028, $39,000 in 2029, and $42,000 in 2030. When the applications are added to the PTEs that have already been granted in previous years for 2026, the total 2026 taxes to be redistributed to other taxpayers is estimated to be $696,000. Staff are seeking direction on which PTE applications to bring forward to the October 7th regular business meeting for first three readings. And that concludes this part of the presentation. So I'll turn it back to the chair.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Susa. Counselor Penningill, go ahead.
Yeah, are all of the religious organizations, I'm not clear on what the qualifications are, but are all the ones presented to us today considered churches? And therefore, we are obligated, at least for building footprint, to provide a PTE? Or is there somewhere there's some discretion?
Through the chair, the building and the footprint is statutorily exempt. So that's not part of the PTE. Council doesn't have discretion on whether to provide tax exemption for that piece of the property. What council does have discretion is the area surrounding the building and its footprint. So often, like, area surrounding is used for parking, say. So that's the piece that's presented for PTE applications and the estimated tax that would be redistributed to other taxpayers.
Okay, so I have two questions then. So the one, all of these ones that are presented are organizations that qualify for the statutory organization as opposed to some that calls themselves a church but doesn't actually qualify?
Through the chair, yes, it has to qualify for the statutory exemption before it's eligible to be considered for a PTE.
Okay, and then just for clarity, the amounts here, is this the sort of just the amount which is discretionary, which is beyond the building footprint? Or is this the total amount and you're telling us, in theory, we could sort of say prorate this and reduce it to only the building footprint piece? Or is this sort of already, it's, this is already what's asked is just outside the building footprint?
Through the chair, it's just outside the building footprint.
Counselor Stoner, I saw a hand and now there is not, so I'm taking it. Counselor Penningill's questions took care of what you were looking for. Counselor Hamilton.
Yeah, thanks very much. And thanks for the clarity on the statutory tax exemptions and permissive tax exemptions. It's very, it's a nuanced little bit, it's important to get clear. And I think the statutory tax exemption, and one of the important things that that does is reserves the right to worship and the tax exemption from that. What I want to ask about is the permissive tax exemption. We see a lot of religious organizations on this list. And one of the great advantages that comes from a religious organization in your community typically are things like daycare facilities, food bank facilities, feeding and eating, helping people. That's a big part that typically comes with. But what we see here is a combination of things like daycare facilities and parking lots. I'm more than happy to give a permissive tax exemption to a religious organization running a daycare. I'm less inclined to providing a permissive tax exemption for the parking area of a religious organization. Can you speak to, how can, how can we gain insight into those communities, those nonreligious community services, childcare is presumably a nonreligious service, that those, that these permissive tax exemptions are coming for? Do we get, can we get any more insight?
Through the chair, the religious organizations that, in their overview, did provide whether they had a daycare and other services that they provide that was detailed in the report. Generally, when daycare services are provided, it's actually in the building that's already receiving the exemption. So then you are looking at still the area surrounding the building. But it would be, if they didn't disclose it, I wouldn't know otherwise. But there are a couple of that noted that they're providing daycare services and all of them noted they're providing other services to the community.
Yeah, and I, for me, I guess it's the challenge of if it's a case where there's a daycare service within the building that's already receiving the tax exemption, but then the statutory tax exemption, and then we're awarding a permissive tax exemption for an open field or facility that's used for something else. All right, thank you. I do understand how we can't get all those details all the time. Thank you.
Counselor, are there any further questions? Okay, so the staff recommendation doesn't quite meet our needs here because one item has been removed. So just in terms of wording, are there any thoughts on how best to word the motion in light of the fact that one of the PTEs are not included at this point?
Through the chair, I may just ask for assistance from our manager of legislative services.
Thank you, Sarah Morris, Manager of Legislative Services. I'm just grabbing some wording for council. And I think that it would be okay for council to proceed with wording along the lines of that council directs staff to bring back the District of Squamish permissive tax exemption bylaws, except from the Squamish Valley Golf Course or Golf Club forward for consideration at the next regular business meeting.
Okay, very good. Counselor Stoner, go ahead.
I just had one quick clarifying question on permissive tax exemptions. Am I correct that these are all or nothing, like, we can't do a 50% tax exemption?
Through the chair, you can do a percentage and it's fully up to council's discretion.
That's helpful information, thank you.
Mayor Hurford, did I see your hand there?
I was gonna move the modified staff recommendation that removed the Squamish Valley Golf and Country Club.
I will second that. Would you like to speak to your motion, Mayor Hurford?
Yeah, I think these all, having been through this process a few times, these all make, make good sense to me and provide, and all these institutions provide important services to the community, so I'm happy to support.
Counselor Penningill?
Yeah, I think the religious exemptions are always a bit challenging. And, and a lot of the, I would say, religious organizations provide a variety of services depending on the organization. They're not necessarily just religious and some of these things are very important for a lot of things. Looking through the list, I would say there are some that provide pretty far-reaching benefits to the, to the community. And there are some, I feel, that are pretty limited. But when you look at the actual amounts to parse apart those differences, we would spend many times over that trying to figure out the exact dollar amount than we are here. And so I think the most prudent thing in this case, and recognizing that quite a number of these organizations, again, do provide a whole lot of broad-reaching community benefit. I'm comfortable supporting these. Thank you.
Are there any further comments? Good, I will call the question, are there any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries unanimous. And Counselor Anderson, I'm looking to you.
Yes, Chair, I wish to declare a conflict on the matter of the application for a permissive tax exemption on the part of the Squamish Valley Golf Club. The implications or the fate of that application does have implications for membership fees for affiliated clubs, one of these being the Curling Club, of which I'm a member. So I'd wish to excuse myself from discussing this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Anderson. And don't go too far as we will need you for the next meeting. Ms. Susa, I'll turn it back to you.
The Squamish Valley Golf Club leases land on Mamquam Road from the district. The golf club provides golf, curling, squash, and space for social activities. It also assists in the facilitation of fundraising opportunities for numerous community groups. The land the golf club is leasing from the district is land that the province does not allow the district to charge lease payments on. The lease agreement expires in October 2029. In lieu of lease payments, the district has contractually agreed through the lease agreement, subject to council approval, that the golf club will pay approximately $45,000 of property taxes per year. This is the amount that's estimated to be related to the for-profit portion of the golf course. To reduce 2026 property taxes to $45,000, a $42,500 PTE would need to be granted. That's the end of the summary for the golf club and I'll turn it back to the chair.
Counselor Stoner, go ahead.
Thank you, through the chair. A few questions, can you remind me when the, the agreement was signed with the Squamish Valley Golf Club?
I'm going to request my colleague Nav, who is on the call, speak to the lease agreement.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Nav Triplett, Portfolio Manager with the Real Estate Team. The lease agreement was signed in 2009 and expires in 2029.
Thank you for that detail. I am just curious around the fact that the amount for the tax payment for the for-profit component of this organization has remained steady since 2009, which to me raises some flags around assistance to business. And I'm, so I'm just curious if staff have any insight there or if this is something that should be brought back for a future discussion and consideration of how we ensure that that component is actually fair and equitable for the for-profit component of this organization.
So through the chair, the, um, so how we have it set up is that they pay a $1 lease fee and then the rest of the commitment is through the, they have to pay the property taxes and the commitment and the lease is for council to consider a PT. So they've asked that we limit to around $45,000, but council has a discretion to kind of control the amount of PT that they want to grant. The for-profit area that is in the golf course has not changed over the years. So hopefully that clarifies.
Yeah, I understand that the size or the amount of the for-profit area probably hasn't changed, but the taxation requirement has changed significantly since 2009. And so, I guess, my other question to staff would be, can we adjust the PTE so that the amount left over would be $45,000 plus an inflation index since 2009 to today?
Counselor Stoner, I think we might have some thoughts here at the table, Ms. Susa?
Through the chair, yes, that's definitely something we can consider. It would be helpful if council passed a motion for us to bring that back for three readings at the October 7th council meeting.
Okay, counsel, any, Counselor Penningill?
Just, I'll start with a, asking sort of along with that comment, the magnitude of workness, it would help to have a refresher of how the money flows and for the not-for-profit versus for-profit, what services are provided by each, just so we can wrap our heads around that. So understanding what's going to the curling club and supporting that, and does that flow through the profit or is that all through the nonprofit? Like, just understanding that a little better would be helpful when this comes back. If that's, if that's a major ask, I would like to know, but.
Through the chair, for clarity, all the revenue streams do come through the for-profit. It was just an allocation of the for-profit at the time the lease was signed between the for-profit and not-for-profit business or revenue streams. However, that can be brought back, the allocation at three readings, if that's helpful for council.
Okay, it looks to me like Counselor Stoner is diligently working away potentially on wording for a motion. Are there any other questions? Counselor Hamilton? He's thinking. Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Hamilton.
Is, for the Squamish Valley Golf Club, there is a not-for-profit business and a for-profit business both operating from that property? from that property as separate entities? Is that correct?
Through the chair, it's only one entity. It's a not-for-profit, but within it, there are for-profit streams and not-for-profit streams.
Yikes. Counselor Stoner? Still working away? Okay, well, Counselor Hamilton appears to have one more question. Do you, if you, if you know, and I know you may not know these details, do you have any examples of what is in the not-for-profit stream and what is in the for-profit stream of the organization? I respect that those details may be beyond your scope at this moment.
Through the chair, I would be apprehensive just because I didn't bring it with me that I might say something incorrect, so don't have the details with me.
I'm feeling a little bit bold in saying the pro shop sells golf clubs, golf balls, so that type of revenue I would expect would fall outside of the not-for-profit aspect of the organization. Counselor Stoner, how are you doing over there?
I think this may be reasonable.
All right, take it away.
I'll try this. And I don't think I have my wording entirely correct, but that staff be directed to bring back for three readings at the October 7th regular business meeting, a permissive tax exemption for the Squamish Valley Golf Course in the amount of $45,000. Oh no, sorry, I have this backwards. A permissive tax exemption for Squamish Valley Golf Course that would result in a payment of $45,000 plus an inflationary index from 2009 to today. Did I get that the right way around?
Counselor Penningill?
Can I just check with my colleague? Because my understanding is they've asked for an exemption, so their tax bill has gone up and up and up in theory. They've held their exemption flat, so they've actually been paying more taxes each year as a result. And so is the, is the ask that we increase the, their exemption because their taxes have gone up?
The other way around, go through the chair. Their payment has remained steady at 45,000, approximately $45,000. We have adjusted the permissive tax exemption every year, increasingly so, to accommodate the increase in tax to hold their annual payment steady. And so I'm actually trying to go the other way where their annual payment is tied to inflation since 2009. And we aren't, the rest of the taxpayers aren't covering the burden and the increasing tax exemptions for the for-profit component of this business.
Am I sensing that staff might have a suggestion for us on wording? If not, I'll go to Mayor Hereford. Mayor Hereford?
Yeah, I appreciate sort of the intent here. I guess the question, a couple of questions. One is we have this contractual, it's interesting space where I believe we have a contractual not obligation, maybe that word is too strong, but to consider a PTE to the amount. But, so that part is a bit odd. But the other piece is, so that agreement was, was agreed to some time ago, has an expiration date, speaks to a fixed amount. The, that moving over time sort of makes some good sense to me. My fear is with this, the motion that hasn't been seconded yet, I don't believe, that we're, that we're sort of trying to work through here is that I don't know the impact of that, like what that number is, or if we're using the right thing. Is it geared to like our tax, the district's tax increase over time and reflecting a burden of that? I'm going to say that our tax increases over time as a municipality might take a different path than, than inflation. So just what, I get that we're trying to increase, the intent feels like we're trying to increase the amount collected in a, in a equitable way to the broader community, but I'm just struggling with the mechanism to do that and the magnitude of that, what that might represent, because I, I don't know what that, that number looks like, but I'm going to say this could represent a substantive bump in, in one year and we may be better served with some sort of picking something that, that is, is workable. That mechanism feels like it could be, I don't know the outcome of it, so I'm having a hard time supporting or wrapping my head around the ability to support that in this meeting.
Okay, and we have time pressure in that at 3:15, we need to open our next meeting. Counselor Penningill?
Just a question to staff. So we've heard, you know, a couple of requests for different information are proposed to come forward with a particular number. If we were to ask for it to come back for three readings, we look at the new information, decide, oh, we want a different number. Can we change the number at that third reading or we need to sort of just move two readings or something if we want that flexibility to change what the number is?
Okay, well, staff is just conferring there. I've been told we bought an extra 15 minutes. We're okay to 3:30 on this topic.
Just on the scheduling thing, not to, to give, so I believe we have the ability to recess this meeting, open the next meeting, recess it, come back to this meeting and conclude if we, if we need to, it is clumsy, but staff?
Thank you for the question. So Ms. Susan and I were just convening. The, from a three readings in timing with PTE, we aren't able to not get three readings in order to meet the deadline. So if there is any challenge in that, that could be difficult to administrate. If council would prefer to give us a solid number, then we could absolutely change that number in the, in, at the time of the three readings, but not a percentage. We wouldn't be able to change the bylaw that quickly to get three readings on a percentage.
Counselor Stoner?
For that end, do we have time between now and the October 7th meeting for staff to come back with some options? On this? And what, if I remember correctly, there's like a statutory requirement to adopt by a certain date, so I'm just trying to work back in a productive way without having to give you a specific number out of the thin air today.
Okay, so staff is just discussing that. I think union of B C municipalities complicates this even further.
Well, I wonder if even for that October 7th meeting, if you can bring like two options of the bylaw maybe. Sorry, that's a lot of extra work.
Through the chair, so we were just convening again. There is only one meeting in between now and, and October 7th. Being that September 30th is a statutory holiday and we have U B C M, so that could be challenging. We could absolutely bring two, two scenarios if, if council wants to direct us into those two scenarios. It will get challenging if we're being trying to be flexible on the three readings with bylaw on October 7th.
Counselor Penningill?
But just to be really clear, what I think I heard, even if you bring two scenarios, while we can't sort of give you a different percentage or something and say, work it out, we can say, actually change it from 50 to 100.
As I understand it, correct. It needs to be able to be written in the bylaw and be specific for that bylaw.
Is that a legacy hand or do you have another?
Um, I think I have a different motion, so my other motion wasn't seconded. Am I right about that?
That's correct. It was not seconded, so we're, we're good to go on fresh wording.
So that staff bring back to the October 7th meeting, two options for adjusting the Squamish Valley Golf Course permissive tax exemption, so that the amount paid for the, by the for-profit component of the organization would be equitable to the portion of the increased tax rate from 2009 to today.
Is there a seconded for that motion? Counselor Hamilton will second that. Would you like to speak to it further, Counselor Stoner? Hold on, Counselor Stoner, Mayor Hereford?
Well, sorry, I just, I just wanted to make sure I had that, that motion. It was two options? What were the, the two options? One was, was it options? Sorry, I thought the wording was options. I just only heard one piece.
I just, I said bring back options that would increase the amount paid by the for-profit component. That would make it more equitable to the portion of the increased tax rate from 2009 today, so I'm, if it's seconded, I'll speak to it.
Yeah, it's already got seconded by Counselor Hamilton. So go ahead.
Thank you through the chair. I didn't actually provide two specific options, which maybe staff need, and if that's the case, then I'm happy to go back and provide some further wording. But my intent is to try and give staff direction to come back with two options that would either gradually increase the tax rate or do a full jump to making it to what the proportion would be that they would be paying today if there had been an increase from 2009 to today. I don't, I can't do that calculation here, so I don't want to actually just pull numbers out of the air. I think that it requires a little bit of due diligence and appreciate that we're working on it. Time crunch with having two less meetings in September and so I hope that my intent is clear. It is to try and get the for-profit component of this organization paying an equitable amount of the taxation that has increased since 2009 to today and making the permissive tax exemption an amount that would then allow for increased payment. And if that is not clear to either my council colleagues or to staff, and I'm happy to hear that feedback or accept an amendment to the motion on the floor, but this is, I think, as clear as I can make it at the 11th hour with only one meeting left before three readings are required by bylaw.
Counselor Hamilton has the seconded. Go ahead.
Yeah, thanks very much. I think this motion is quite clear. And I am certainly not hesitant to go dig for some numbers. And the numbers I think that we're looking for, I'll share them and staff may have expertise that will shed light on different numbers. But Schedule 704 in the B C, I forget what website it is, delineates, gives you the tax paid per representative house. And in 2009, the amount of tax paid on a representative house in Squamish was $3,300. In 2025, the tax paid for a representative house in Squamish is nearly $7,400. So there's a more, been more, a more than doubling in the tax burden on our residents with a level tax burden on the Squamish Valley Golf Course. So yes, I support the motion.
Mayor Hereford?
I'll be supporting the, the motion, although I'm not sure what I'll do with the information when it comes back. I do think that this is a unique situation with a unique arrangement. And, and was that the, the way that we would negotiate a, an agreement at this point in time? And I'd, I'd argue this, maybe we, maybe we wouldn't, but whether with the numbers that we just heard, whether that's, you know, how that relates to this or not remains to be seen, but ultimately means that maybe we don't need a PTE if that's what, that what we're, we're looking at. So I do think it's more for, but I'm happy to support this for, to support the discussion of what's appropriate at the time. And I'm not saying that I'm, I don't think, I think it'd be premature to speak too much on the, what the outcome of that math would be and how palatable or how reasonable that is for a path forward. So, but to inform that discussion, I'll, I'll support the motion.
Counselor Penningill?
Yeah, I think, you know, it seems to me for a few years, a few of us have flagged that we had some concerns about this and, and I think a couple of times said, this is the last year and then we've had the discussion over and over. And so I think it's maybe time we really drill down on the numbers. I do recognize, although, you know, golf course and exemption for a golf course is pretty hard to swallow in some respects, but there's also curling and squash and trails and a number of things and, and it's not clear to me at, at this moment, which is in the profit piece and not for, and how this all flows out. So I do want to understand that fairly well, but you know, in terms of a, a for-profit business getting an exemption, I, I think we can't do that. So I just want to really understand. And so we're not doing that, but I really want to understand what we're talking about here. The general principle that I've heard my colleagues speak about, I am supportive of. And so I'd just like that, that understanding before we do the final vote. Thank you.
Okay, unless there are any further comments, I will call the question. Are there any opposed? Seeing none, the motion passes unanimously. Mayor Hereford?
I'd like to move termination of this meeting.
Oh, well, that was sneaky, wasn't it? Seconded by Counselor Hamilton. Are there any opposed? Motion carries. And now we have to open a special meeting. Am I correct, Mayor Hereford?
Yes, thank you. So welcome everybody to the special business meeting for the District of Squamish for September 9th. As always, we got to do our work today in the traditional unceded territory of the Squamish Nation. Could I have someone move adoption of the agenda, please? Moved by Counselor Hamilton, seconded by Counselor French. Any opposed? Motion carries. Motion to close. Moved by Counselor Hamilton. I'll second that. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We'll be in recess while we break the, the room down. I think we need 20 minutes. We'll do it at 3:45. We'll come back in the closed. Thank you.